City Council Fire Protection District and successor agency to the Atwater Redevelopment Agency. At this time, if you will all rise for our pledge to diligence to our beautiful flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation.
Our fathers, we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. We thank you for the fact that you love us and you care for us. And Father, we've gathered here today to, to seek your wisdom. We thank you for our city council and our mayor. We ask that you have your hand upon them and Lord, give them wisdoms, a guide and direct our city. We also pray for our police that are out patrolling right now, that you protect and build a hedge around them. Father, be with their families as well, be with our firemen. Lord, we thank you for their service. And Father, we're just so thankful for the fact that you care for us. And Lord, we ask right now that everything that is said and done tonight would be that to glorify thy name. And Father, we need to feel your presence tonight, for we do ask it in Jesus's name, amen.
Okay. And if we could have the roll call, please?
Bergman?
Here.
Raymond?
Absent.
Rivero?
Here.
Vineyard?
Here.
Price?
Here.
We have a forum.
Ladies and gentlemen, you'll note that Councilmember Brian Raymond isn't here tonight. He has a very ill grandmother in Fresno that he is tending to, and I would just ask all of you and all the people that are viewing at home to please keep Brian and his family and his grandmother in your thoughts and your prayers. It would go a long ways towards him. We appreciate that. Okay. Deputy City Attorney, if you would give us a report out of closed session.
There's nothing to report in terms of action items. Instead, the council was, the council gave direction to staff.
Approval of agenda as posted or amended?
Is there anyone that has any issues with the agenda as written? Lieutenant Bergman? Thank you. I had a conversation with Councilman Raymond earlier and he had asked if we could pull item seventeen. He has some strong concerns about this and he would like to be able to be here to address it, so if we could pull this till next meeting? Or I understand Councilman Vineyard is going to be missing the next meeting and he too would like to address this, so would it be too much to ask if we can move it till April? No, I don't, I don't believe so. I think that would be fine. I don't think there's anything pressing that we need to do it right away. We have till 2016. Yes, I think we got time. Okay, would you like to make that informative?
I, well, I'm just asking that we be pulled, wouldn't we?
We just approve the agenda as amended then?
Yes.
That'd be fine.
I will make that motion.
One second. Is there any other discussion or any other amendments to the agenda? Call for a question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond? Is absent. Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ceremonial matters. Merced County Office of Education Speech Festival winners.
Would the participants come forward?
I think that needs to be turned on. Hello?
Yes. The youth in this community, they participate in a lot of things out there, whether it's at county level or district level or statewide level. And every year, the Merced County Office of Education holds a speech festival. And it's very competitive. There was approximately 200 students competing from, I believe it was 22 schools. And we were very fortunate to have such outstanding students that we had three of them bring home trophies. And, and let me set you your certificates. Thomas Gardner for third place in fifth grade. Congratulations. Zachary Pickle for second place in the sixth grade. And I know this young man really well, he's Joseph Rivero. Third place in the sixth grade. And just to show you how spectacular they did, there were, there's three trophies for each grade level, and for the fifth and sixth grade, they brought home half of the trophies. So, good job. And if any parents would like to take pictures right now, go ahead, photo op.
Can they each give what the title of their speeches were?
Sure. Could, could you give us your title?
The False Case.
The Sun and the Two Twin Planets.
Bombing Mission 327.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We have an opportunity tonight, myself, Patrick Ferretta, who's in the back of the audience tonight. We've been working with PG&E sometime on some safety issues related to pipelines for gas transmission. And so tonight, they want to make a brief presentation to the council about some of the things and activities they're going to be doing to improve safety. So we have a representative here tonight, different one, maybe not the one you're used to. He's going to introduce himself and he's going to be our rep for a while.
I'm quite certain you'd rather hear those students give my presentation, so if we can ask them back, I can give them my notes and they can do it for us. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you. My name is Thomas Reeves and I do have a couple slides to give you with regards to pipeline safety and Atwater specifically. And I'd like to garner some interest and also some feedback from you. As we have been working with staff, it'd be, it behooves us at this point just to get some interest from you as well on what's happening, especially on Atwater Boulevard. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to present. And safety is our number one responsibility. As we're delivering you clean and efficient power, we want to make sure that we're doing it in a safe way. And after the last four years, we've accomplished a lot of work in replacing gas pipelines, but also testing and validating the strength of our pipelines and installing new valves to make sure that we can test them properly. While we continue to make progress along those lines to make them safe, we also realize that we have a duty to make sure that they remain safe. And, so I want to talk to you about a couple things. The Pipeline Pathways Program, just tell you what, about what it is. Tell you a little bit about how we perform outreach to communities around our pipeline and also discuss some replacement and restoration options that are available to the city. Our top priority, as I said, is the safety. And that, and our work on this 6,750 mile natural gas transmission system includes the pressure testing, installing new valves, replacing our pipelines, and also continuing our leak survey, just to make sure that we are constantly aware of what's happening with our transmission pipeline across the entire service territory. In 2013, we launched this program. And what we do is we go through and we make sure that we have GPS coordinates for all of our transmission pipelines, so that we know exactly, exactly where our pipelines are. And that we make sure that we have markers over the pipeline, and if we don't have markers there, we replace them, we put new markers in. And we identify conflicts located either on or near the pipe that would present a safety issue. Some of these conflicts identified include structures built either on top of the gas line or in the utility easement, as well as materials stored in the easements that prevent access to the pipelines. Other conflicts identified include trees and bushes that have woody root systems that can wrap around the pipeline and cause stress, which we've seen several times. Our program's goal is to ensure that our system and the public safety, or the public stays safe by removing these conflicts that are 10 feet away from the pipeline or less, and then replacing the trees and bushes that are removed in an alternate location that doesn't present a conflict. The Pipeline and Informed Planning Alliance, PIPA, issued a report in 2010 that detailed the best practices for gas transmission operators, and that is what we are working to accomplish. As a company, we wanted to see some solid data about the impacts of tree roots on high pressure gas systems, so we partnered with CSU Fresno to perform a scientific study. And this study found that 75% of the cases where there was significant root contact, there was also damage to the pipe's external protective coating, which could lead to corrosion if not checked. There is also the danger of the trees pulling up a gas line if it blows over in a storm. And I'm sure that we've all seen cases where root systems have come in contact with foundations or sidewalks. That can happen with the pipes also underneath the foundation. Of course, the key word is safety, but we also work on collaboration and communication. When we identify a conflict, we will reach out to the local agency and property owners within a 500-foot radius. And our outreach includes letters, telephone calls, and in-person meetings to all of the property owners that are within the, the gas transmission pipeline. Before any work is done, we will have a signed agreement with the property owners to ensure that they understand what we're removing and what we're putting back in place. So this is the work that's specifically in Atwater. We categorize the work into two. One is franchise or the city-owned trees and vegetation, the other is private property. There's a total of 10 projects in the city. Four of those are city-owned or franchise projects. And the four projects represent a total of 23 tree removals, one tree pruning, and 32 brush removals. And it all happens on Atwater Boulevard. So this is just a broad overview map where you can see, I'm not sure if this, yep. So that's Atwater Boulevard, and that, the green just indicates the, the basic area of where the vegetation would be removed. Now, as a general rule, in terms of replacement and restoration in franchise, we work to make sure that you have vegetation in its place, both on-site of where we remove the vegetation and also in another area that's more compatible with trees, for example. So wherever we remove one tree, we're happy to either plant one in its place somewhere safe or hand you two. So for every one that we remove, we'd be happy to hand you two, and then you can decide where you'd like to put them. Or there's also a compensation in lieu of restoration where we will calculate the, the amount based on the number of trees that we've taken out, and then we give you that amount of money, and then you can decide where that would be best suited. Same goes for our tree replacement restoration for private property owners. So whenever we go to a private property and, and inform them of issues in proximity to the tra, the transmission pipeline, we will also offer them the same type of concept where it's one-to-one replacement, or two-to-one replacement, or even the cash compensation in return. So our commitment going forward is that we share the information freely with regards to the location of the pipelines and the vegetation that is in or around the proximate, the proximity of that transmission pipeline. And then an ongoing education, an ongoing discussion about keeping the right-of-way clear, both with the city.
If I might interrupt, Councilmember Rivero had a question for you.
Before you move too far forward, I'm sorry for interrupting right now, but you were mentioning a tree replacement, but you're also wanting to remove 32 of the, what you call, brush. And is there a compensation for that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And you also mentioned a plan, a landscaping plan working together with the city, so there will be funds that are, that we're going to share in developing this plan.
Well, it's no cost to you, so it would all be PG&E's cost that we would work with the city to identify the, the restoration plan.
Okay, all right, I wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Of course. And feel free at any time. So we want to make sure that there's ongoing education on the, keeping the right-of-way clear. And also, we want to make sure that we keep the area safe, and we will have that ongoing dialogue with the city and also with the community and the pri, private property owners on, how do we keep the, how do we keep it safe? How do we keep the vegetation from getting in the way of the pipelines? Now, all of the private property owners have been preliminarily contacted, so we are at least in discussion stages with them. We wanted to make sure that we bring this information to the city. And many thanks to Mr. McBride and Mr. Ferretta for having those discussions with us, at least in terms of getting these concepts rolling. And at this point, what we're asking for is just a dialogue with the city, with our city council and the mayor, in terms of where do you feel the sentiment is with these trees and vegetation that's along Atwater Boulevard? We're happy to either have that discussion now, we can have it going forward with staff if you'd like to provide some indication of your interest. Again, it's one-to-one replacement, two-to-one, or compensation. Although I must add that we're not tied to these, and we can have some sort of innovative way to partner with the city. Perhaps you've got a nursery somewhere, maybe there's a, a tree farm. We've worked with some neighborhoods where there's a monument that they wanted resurrected. So I think there's ways that we can partner on some unique way of making sure that the city is made whole based on some vegetation that we, we have to remove on its proximity to the transmission pipeline. My kind, my contact information is here, but I believe it's also in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions? The one question I have is the main transmission line, does it parallel the Union Pacific Railroad tracks? Is that typically how they are put in, in a transportation type of a corridor along?
I shouldn't say typically, but yes, though, in, as far as Atwater Boulevard, there is the railroad right-of-way there, and so we are going to be dealing with the railroad as well in terms of their right-of-way.
Okay, so, you're talking about an area that begins at the off-ramp coming southbound on 99, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that would, then where are those oleanders or whatever it is?
Correct.
All growing along right there?
Correct.
City Manager. That is, what part of that then would involve county? We had had that discussion before, you recall?
That's all city.
Oh, that part is?
That's all city.
Okay.
The part to the south is the county.
Okay. Okay, very good. I guess my, my concern also is, you know, the degradation of that line in the long term. You know, I, I would suspect this came by way of that tragic fire that we had in the Bay Area. Is that not correct?
It allowed us to be more cognizant of what we needed to make safe.
That's a good answer. So I guess my question is, you know, what, is, is there an age of our line that you know of and all that? Because, you know, I, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't want to have a catastrophe of that magnitude occur here. So, you know, is there, is there a lifespan to these, you know, that, that is typical? Is there certain conditions? I, I am wondering about seismic type of activity, that type of thing, that would might further degrade the transmission line?
Sure. To answer your first question, I do know that your line was put in in 1938.
Yikes.
Well...
And all up to code, I'm sure, right?
Well, once we remove the trees, then we will know for sure. That is really part of this process, that we're making sure that we are completely aware of what's in there, and that they have the valves in place, that they have the GPS coordinates in place. And when there are vegetation and structures in the way, it prevents us from making sure that we know exactly what's there and, and the state that it's in. And so that's where the transparency comes into play, that throughout this entire process, we are working with the city and the owners and the residents around to make sure that they are also aware of what's there and the state that it's in. And we have no reason to believe at all that there is any issue whatsoever until we can, currently, but also just going forward, making sure that we can access it.
City Manager.
Thomas, I, I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the councilmen, and we know when you rip down all those bushes, nobody wants to come into the city of Atwater and look at railroad tracks all the way down there. What can you do to assure that we're going to be able to somewhat be able to cover the railroad tracks? I mean, obviously, they're covered now. Is there any type of foliage that we could use that would be the same type as, for a coverage for the tracks?
Well, yes, there's, it depends on the root structure. There is plenty of vegetation that we have accessible that we can put, put in its place, if just for aesthetics, but also as a barrier that we can put in its place. That's absolutely possible. But again, it depends on the root structure and how tall it gets and how deep it gets. So we can work on that and make sure that there is something pleasing there. In some communities, we've actually agreed on a fence where we know that there's not going to be a root structure, so that's a possibility as well. So that's where I was, I was saying that, that we are absolutely prepared to be creative in the way that we come up with some solution there.
Block wall?
I, if that's something that you would like to see.
I don't think it falls into that $25 a bush criteria, though. Oh, boy. Is there any other questions from the council? Very good. Thank you very much, it was very informative presentation.
Ray Morgan Company paperless city council packets. Mayor and city council, on August 25th, 2014, the city council awarded a contract to Ray Morgan Company to replace the city's copiers. Tonight, they're here to talk about phase two paperless city council packets.
Good evening, how are you doing, city councilmembers? My name is Andreas Witt. I'm Regional Vice President for Ray Morgan Company, this is Jeff Angstead, our document management specialist, and Tamara Landa Becker is our Senior Account Manager. Good evening. We just want to take an opportunity to go over a, a phase of a project that we had proposed to start when we had the initial proposal we put in front of you in August. And that was the council packet, the document management, document management solution that we were proposing. And so today, what we want to do is we'd like to just share with you some of the other benefits that we have and how we would like to move forward with looking at that particular aspect of this project. If you recall, the project that we proposed was a co-opable agreement. This, along with that, still goes under that co-opable agreement as well. I'm not going to take much more time, you don't need to hear my ramblings, you want to speak to this gentleman, so, Jeff?
So it kind of touched on what, at least my goal for today was, is to refresh a conversation that we started a little while ago. We don't have much, it's a, it's a large solution, so there's a lot of yeses that we can say. We are not going to do that in slides today. So this is really just to fill in some of the blanks on conversations that we've had. Does that sound, is there, has anyone seen Laserfish or a document management system? No? So who we are, 50-plus years in a document technology company, it's a, we're a service-based company. We have been reselling Laserfish for over 17 years, so this is not a new product for us. Laserfish itself has been around since 1987, so this is a solid solution, not on version one. Full content management suite, and it, it is able to scale with your needs. And that's important, especially when you're talking about budgets. Maybe we target something small and then grow as you need maybe additional solutions. Well, what I wanted to talk about specifically was, and that was the agenda packet creation process. You know, if, if we could get iPads in front of you, that's, that's where we're going with this. Laserfish has a built-in client so that it works on your Apple, your Android device. You can have these stands here instead of the papers and the packets that are getting printed. And when we really, when we convert your agenda packet into that type of automation, things become faster. Now you can do things simultaneously, so including approvals. So now you're not in this linear process of waiting for Jim to approve this to get into the, the packet. You can send out multiple approvals at the same time. Large concepts, but again, we're just refreshing a conversation that we've had. So you are looking at, you can have access, 24/7 access to your documents from a web browser. That is the native application for the iPad iOS. And why is this, how, why do people like the web products? Because it's cheap to install. There's no real IT overhead when somebody needs to look at the document management system from the line in the grocery store. They pop open their tablet or their smartphone and you can browse to the repository. Zero installation from your IT department. We did it on the backside. Getting stuff into laser... Getting stuff into Laserfish, so, this is, you know, document management is about capturing the real world, and now working with this, and part of that solution is, is not changing the way that you're doing things. So, we can work with your copiers, your existing copiers, the scan-to buttons, we can pick up documents from those scan-to buttons, and they can automatically be brought in, and then we start doing some things with them, to move them around to the appropriate location. Laserfish Snapshot, I wanted to make sure that you knew that a lot of times, people are looking for an integration with another application. If you can print to a Windows printer, you can save documents into Laserfish. So, Laserfish Snapshot is a way to get your documents in. Yes, you can do scanning, or just simply drag-and-drop. You'll notice that we do integrate with all of the office products, and eventually, we'll talk about how we can actually look at documents, recognize things off them, pull them off, and then move them along in their process. And that's kind of what we're talking about with your agenda packet preparation. So, here is workflow and automation. It's easy to get started in automation, it starts with something small, and then you take the successes from those things, and you build it into something else. So, again, one of the things I talked about earlier was, you can send dynamic approvals, notices to people that things have occurred, or, as you can see, that we can notify people that, hey, the request of their agenda item, maybe give them an update and status, and you can have all of this done automatically. And that's really when this becomes more successful, is it takes, you know, it takes the need to communicate, it handles that for you. So, additionally, you could set reminders for any of the task participants. I've given you just a simple example of how some people use Laserfish, at least, to move items through their boards, and into their board packets. When a document is saved or put into Laserfish, again, you have access to it from anywhere. Simple workflows with big impact. So, when we jump, we make a decision on, let's start with our agenda packet, or like some of the other cities, other city clients, they tackle the accounts payable process, so they want the invoice recognition, they save some time in their invoice recognition process, and push it off to their accounting system. Simple workflows with big impact, this one is an expiring document workflow. Simple, elegant solution, that is designed to help us identify the documents that are currently in our filing cabinet, that aren't telling us that they're expiring, something like a certificate of insurance, or subcontract, any of those things that are sitting out there now, that are not, that have an expiration date on them. That simple little workflow will notify somebody that that document is expiring. This is a deadline branch, so they have so long to actually respond to the initial email, and then it would maybe go into an escalation branch. Simple little workflow, but legally, this thing has saved some of our customers a lot of money. Any questions on any of this so far? Again, that's... So, our next steps are, is to come back in and meet with a couple of people. One is your, Margarita, I believe, does your invoice packet prep, or excuse me, your agenda packet preparation process. That's one of those people that we'd like to talk to, and, you know, just like this workflow here, the conversation is, is what do you do now? And then, what do you do? And then, where do you send it? How many copies do you make? And we address it, kind of in sequence like that, then we find a way to step in and automate that process. And then, this direction is a solution that evolves around how you do it. Instead of taking a template, and stamping it, and says, here's how you do it here. This is a customized solution, and also, there's a...
Proof of concept.
Yeah, so the proof of concept, which is where we get to show you the solution. You know, we design it, set the thing up, and then you get to basically kick the tires. So, timelines, did you want to, maybe?
We are ready to start within the next two weeks, to do that interviewing process, and like I said, that Jeff, I should say, attributed to, it's identifying the steps in the current workflow. So, once we're able to do that, and we have a nice layout of that, and we have a form that we actually use, and I can send that electronically tomorrow, to Margarita, and she may even want to start looking that over, and identifying the steps, and then we can sit down and get together, and just make sure that we understand what has been written out. We work with our product team for Laserfish, and they go through, and we basically like to get samples, so a sample packet. That's how we come up with the proof of concept, we throw it into the actual software, and we show you what that would look like, for your proof of concept. So, we don't want it guessed, we want to make sure that we're all on a grant, yes, this is how we would like to see this going forward, and this is how it works. It's a very interesting workflow, and it can be customized as well. So, even from that proof of concept, having recently done one of these, sometimes there's some conversations after the fact, saying, you know, this really isn't a necessary step, and you can delete or add accordingly.
The overall benefit to the city for this, is to cut down the amount of labor that's taken to do some of these manual tasks, and start allowing automation to do that. In addition to that, is also limiting a lot of the paper that you have, and that's a very big part. So, what you're going to, some of the benefits you'll see is reduction in your overall production costs, reduction in the labor required to perform a lot of these tasks, and also, from a document management standpoint, is looking for documents and finding them. Along with that, you have some other things that you're going to have, your, just retention policies and so forth, for your disaster recovery, disaster recovery for the city. So, there are a lot of additional benefits that the city will experience as a result of this.
And retaining the integrity of the original files. You always are able to do so. So, even if there are newer versions, you will always have the integrity of the original file available.
I am impressed, and I have to tell you that my introduction to the city council here in December, was a real eye-opener, when it came to the agenda, as I'm sure Gina will attest to. This, for people that don't realize, this is what we get. You guys just get a couple of pieces of paper, but this is what we get. And December's was twice as thick as this. So, and, the headache with it, at least that I saw, the day that I stepped in over here, thinking that it was all done, was that there were certain items that needed to be added to the agenda, and it's like, you know, activate the war room, you know, because now we've got to go back and start numbering things, in sequential order, and this type of thing. So, my concern is, as you stated, the labor involved, I mean, there was just a whole house full of people here, to go and put this together, in addition to material, and...
All that. So, it's, it really was an eye-opener to see what is actually involved with compiling and putting together the agenda. The paper aspects, everything. So, this to me, as I have told Gina and her staff, is that this is something, we've got to ratchet it up. And if there's a cost-saving to the city, by way of doing this, and with respect to labor, materials, the like, then I think that's, it's time for us to move forward on this. So, I'm very impressed with this, and I'm hopeful that we can move forward with this as quickly as possible, and come to the 21st century, basically. It's something that I think we've probably needed in the city for a very long time, and I think Gina will agree to that, I'm sure, and as will Kim, and everybody else. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, Pro-Tim Bergman?
Thank you. And I do want to thank you for coming. I originally asked for this over a year ago, so I'm glad we're finally at this stage.
With what you're saying that has to be done, is there any way that this can be brought as an action item in March, so we can finally take some action on this, or is it going to take longer?
It's up to, we have the information, we can provide it for your staff, we'll just need to get some information completed.
Feedback.
We need the feedback. So, if we can give you that within the next two weeks, I think we can come back with something by March.
Okay, then I will, at the end of the meeting, that, this is something I want to see in March, so we can get it going. Thank you. Council member Reveal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too would like to see us move forward, something that's going to make Atwater more efficient. The one thing I'd like to be brought back to, is the actual cost, or estimation of cost, for moving in this direction, too, because I'd like to see exactly what it's going to cost to say so. That's one of the things I'd like brought back.
Yeah, I appreciate you, in that comment, too. I'd like to see a side-by-side comparison also, and also for the public, so that they can see, you know, this isn't something that is a, you know, something that we're doing, you know, because it's cool, or any of that sort of stuff. It's actually going to pay benefits to us, in the way of efficiency and a cost-saving. So, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Bergman. We need to bring this back in March. So, I appreciate and thank you for your wonderful dissertation here today, and we will be chatting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ferrari Ranch and Atwater Merced Expressway Project.
Mayor and council members, we have tonight, for purposes of discussing the project, Mr. David Deltor. You'll be getting familiar with him over the next year or so. I'm going to be loading the presentation, we have an update, a little minor change to it, so bear with me, just give me a couple minutes for that, and Dave can talk about the project while I'm doing that, and we'll get underway.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Ferrari Ranch project. I apologize for being late, the ultimate pass is an interesting place to be, when you're trying to get over there, and there are several accidents, so I, again, I apologize. We've been working on this project for seven years, I have grandchildren that are not this old. And we've also been working on the interchange project as part of that. We were successful in convincing the State Highway Commission to fund the interchange, and of course, it will be done pretty soon, and we'll see a picture of it on the screen, but I'm sure you all have been out there to see it in person. Projects of this size are very complex, and require compliance with a variety of state laws, and local laws and regulations. City staff and your consulting team have been a pleasure to work with over these many years, and indeed, have provided comments that have improved the project substantially. Right now, we're in about the middle of our, of the environmental impact report. The mayor was talking about how thick the agenda is. If you go into my garage, the documents I have so far are six feet in length, and the EIR for this project, I would guess, at the end of the day, will be about this thick, with all the appendices. It's a, it's a complex situation. It's California, and this is what you must do. Timing-wise, we anticipate that project approvals will be before the planning commission and the city council sometime in the fall. It depends upon the glitches that we, that we have, and even after that, the project has to be annexed to the city, so that's another, probably six-month project at LAFCO. LAFCO will be using the project EIR for its environmental compliance document. The Ferrari family, as committed to this project and the AME has been exemplary. They continue to support the timely completion of the AME to UC Merced, because they believe that these next transportation segments of the AME are vital to the economic well-being of this subregion that you are in. The next segment, from Greensands to Santa Fe, including the Castle interchange, is particularly important for the county, for you, and for this project, and for UC Merced. Along those lines, it seems to us that transportation improvement dollars, which are now governed by MCAG, to some extent, to a great extent, I think they should be allocated, and John Ferrari thinks they ought to be allocated on a subregional basis. This is a policy matter, you guys need to talk about this with other representatives of MCAG. But we believe if those dollars are allocated that way, rather than the way they are now, it'll enhance economic development projects within the subregions. Again, thank you, I'm sorry to be late, and we're going to go on with the presentation. We're going to talk about the project history and status, we did that a little bit, the Ferrari plan and concept, we're going to see, we're talking about some of the economic development numbers, that will obviously be positive for the city of Atwater. Positives from Merced County, and we talked about a little bit about timetables and schedules. This is an important slide, this shows where it is, and it's right here, and here is the interchange. This is the first phase of the Atwater Merced Expressway. The second phase goes to Castle at Santa Fe, and then the final leg of the immediate future segments goes over to UC Merced, following Bellevue. This is relatively easy to build, the tough part is going to, was this interchange, and this interchange is even more difficult, because of its size and complexity, and because of the railroad tracks. But if you look, it's a loop. The plan is to have a loop that goes along this way. This portion of AME is a long way out, in terms of reality, frankly. But if you look at it, this is still a loop, using 99, and even this is part of the loop. So, the loop concept of transportation planning is alive and well here. And this shows the Brookfield development, the Bellevue corridor, UC Merced, the city Merced, and some other developments that are around at the area. Again, this is the project site, the interchange, the next phase of AME, and then the next phase of AME after that, and the city proper, and of course, Castle. This is a bigger view of the project area. The project area is really the annexation area. There's the Ferrari Ranch project, the commercial project that we are trying to get approved, but we're also trying to get approved, the annexation to the city, which requires us to annex other areas, to avoid having islands. We're not permitted to do that under state law. The, we're bringing in some inhabited portions, which means those people have some rights to vote on the matter, if they choose to do that. This is a slide that Scott insisted that we put in, and it's a good one, actually, and we like it, and we talk about this in the various documents that will be, you'll be seeing soon, over the next several months. And there's subareas, there's the Station Manchester subarea, which is the residential area that we have to bring into the city. There's some commercial along Broadway here, and then we, what we call the Subarea Two, which is Canal Buick, there's really no residential there, and that's going to be pre-designated business park, one of the approvals that you're going to have to give to it, as we go along. This is Canal Creek. The Ferrari Ranch project, East and West, is Subareas Three, and they're on both sides of the expressway, which is here, and then the interchange area is this land here. And we have a Subarea Four, which is what we call the 6.3-acre parcel, that is not a part of the, it's a part of the project that's being annexed, but it's not a part of this Ferrari Ranch proper. This shows the existing residential and commercial that will be done by others. This is the business park area, the so-called Canal Buick area. We show a street circulation pattern in here, here is Canal Creek. This portion of the Ferrari Ranch project is, we show our regional sports center. Here is our regional medical center complex, and I'll get into that a little bit further. And this is our, the retail commercial side of the project, which includes a hotel site. And of course, this is the AME that's almost done now. A little close-up of the interchange. This is an existing residential area that we're not proposing to annex at this point. This is the 6.3-acre parcel... This is the 6.3 acre parcel, which is not a part of the Ferrari Ranch project, and this is a slightly larger set of the Ferrari Ranch project. And the expressway, this was the fall of last year. There's a lot of work that's been done since then, but it gives you some idea of the scale and size of the, of the expressway.
...in relationship to the surrounding property. You can see some of the bridges. So, current status, it's a little, you know, it's a few months old. This is the project phasing for AME. This is the first section here, and the next section, this is the Castle section from Kerr to Santa Fe, and the interchange at Santa Fe, and AME, and then the next section of AME over to UC Merced. This, this, this one's about $57 million, plus or minus, and this one's probably gonna be a little bit more than that. These are, this is a summary of the land uses and the jobs. These are, the job estimate is conservative, I think, but this is what our experts tell us. The retail commercial on the east side of AME, that's between AME and Kerr, is about 1.5 million square feet, that's about 3, about 3,900 jobs that build out. The rest of AME, the medical center, the hospital and medical offices is about 666,000 square feet, that's about 2,600 jobs, a little over. The adjacent development and the residential, which would be Station Manchester and Canal Buick, is about 925 jobs and about that much square feet based on current city planning requirements. So, we have a total of about 3 million square feet. This is a big project in California by any standards, and it happens to be in your community. And we're talking about 7,500 jobs that, that build up. This is out of the financial and fiscal economic report. We're required to do this, we would do it anyway. I don't see this changing too much, but we have a, we're supposed to take a look at what the net is, fiscal impact, whether it's bad or good. In this case, it is pretty good. There's no residential involved to eat up city services, so we have about, surplus of about $3.3 million at project stabilization, which means it build out and it's cooking along for a year or so. So, we've got a total of $3.9 million in revenue and about .6 million in costs because basically we have to do our own services, basically. This is mostly for fire and police, of course, some public works. So, the net additional funds will be available to support other city services, and of course, that is the council's job to see how that works. This is the illustrative plan. Again, this is the Station Manchester area, the Canal Buick area here, there's Canal Creek, there's the regional sports complex, here is the medical center and medical offices, and here is the commercial part over here. There's a center complex, which is about 20, 22 screens. There's a hotel site here, there's a big box here, we have some fairly typical commercial along here, a little smaller big box over here, and then this is the regional town center, kind of a rockable town center of which we have some images that we'll show you, but we think we're pretty close to what the reality is when it, when it opens. And of course, this is the interchange. This is, part of this is a detention basin, and we have detention basins everywhere because stormwater management is an important consideration for a project like this. This shows the conceptual retail, a little bit blown up here. Here's the hotel, the theater concept or complex, we have fast food stations, neighborhood retail up here, here's the rockable retail center complex, there's the big box down here, and a smaller big box over here, and of course, parking for all of that, which takes up a lot of room. These are illustrative renderings of what we think it should look like. What has to happen, when the project is approved and it's annexed, according to your code, Arizona code, we have to come back in with development, specifically development plans, and that includes color, texture, height, landscaping, lighting, signage, and so you'll get a better, more definitive look, but it's, we hope to have it look, have it of this This is my daughter in Arizona, no, just kidding. Although, although we did, some of this is, this actually exists, it's Kieran Plaza in Scottsdale. We did like it so much, we thought it would be, like to replicate some of that, some of that, some of these visuals, like the, like the street lighting and, you know, the paving, textures, and colors, some of the signage, we like some of the signage, we'll see that too, some of these overhangs. Those architectural details are important, and you'll get a chance to vote on all of that stuff. Oh, and here it is again, okay, so this is what it looks like, and there's a, there's a project in Rancho Croquimunga, I think, that we like too, that has a similar feel for this, and I think these palm trees would grow here, I hope they would. They don't take too much water. Actually, you have the sun-covered sidewalks with awnings and shade and so on, so make it a more inviting place to shop. I'd like to thank the following people, the citizens of Atwater, and the city staff and its consulting team, they've been excellent, and MCAG and its staff, who've been great to work with, Merced County officials and staff, past and present staff members and county officials, Granite Construction, who's doing a fabulous job on the interchange. Our hats off to the State Highway Commission and the Caltrans, although I have not seen their comments on the EIR yet, so I, maybe I'll hold back my thanks to them for a while. And of course, my consulting team, which is one of the best on a project like this in, in California. And we're happy to answer any questions you have regarding this, and thank you again. I thank you. Any questions for any of the councilmembers?
I can only tell you that, you know, I apologize for not having, to have a one-on-one conversation with you folks earlier, but I'll tell you, this is a fabulous project, and obviously one that the city is looking forward to. Obviously, the revenue from sales and things along those lines are much needed and much welcomed to our city, and I appreciate you giving us a very nice overview of what you intend to do and conceptual ideas. I would only make one comment, that you have a picture in here showing like a cobblestone walk, and I can only tell you that we're trying to eliminate some of that stuff in our downtown area right now, so if you could smooth that out right there, I think we're on board.
We can do that.
Okay, real good, I appreciate that.
I should add, Mr. Mayor, that we'll be presenting this to your now combined planning commission in a couple of weeks, so they'll get to see it too, so they'll be informed as well.
Very good. We certainly appreciate your time, and no apologies needed, we all are appreciative of the Altamont and the headaches that it produces, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just had a question when I saw that. I, I liked the concept, the project you're gonna do, it's gonna be a big boon for Atwater when that comes in, especially with the retail, the Atwater Merced Expressway, and at that location, and I think it's an excellent spot. The one thing I noted, though, that's, you were listed as Regional Medical Center, at one time I heard hospital, and so, what direction are you planning now? Is it, is the regional medical center being on the line of a hospital, or just the center of doctor offices?
No, no, it includes a hospital.
Okay, because I, I think that that would be an excellent idea. If you, if you've ever visited Modesto, or Merced, or Turlock, you try to find a hospital, you gotta drive through the town, it takes you forever, so if you have emergencies right now, there, there's nothing close to any main arteries, and so, that's, that would be a huge benefit. We'd actually have a, a regional medical center, a hospital, close to a main artery, and I think that will in itself save so many lives, so I really wanna see a hospital go in there. So, I'm pushing for you guys to.
I should mention that from the beginning, Colliers International has been our broker, and they have spoken with a number of hospital chains. I think we're showing about 200 beds here, maybe a little bit more, depends on what they, we certainly could do a larger one if they wanted to, we certainly have the room, and those talks have been going on for several years. They've talked to many hospital chains, and it takes hospitals a long time to make a decision because, as you can imagine, that is a really capital-intensive structure, so they gotta be very careful and do a lot of homework to, before they decide to put something in, so, but we've been talking to hospital chains for about five years, and I think we're getting closer all the time. When I'm able to, I will certainly update everybody on the marketing side of that. What we wanna do is have a, Colliers wants a website, and they're working on that now, and hopefully I'll be able to come back in a, you know, 60 days or so, maybe even sooner than that, with a update on the marketing side of this and, and give you some idea of the interest. I have, I have personally, I'm a broker, but I'm not doing that for this project, but I have introduced to Colliers several hotel chains, and given the location and where it is and the size of everything else that's going around it, all the hotels wanna be there, and there's, I would think that you might see hotels first, actually, in terms of going vertical on the site, so.
I, I also would like to echo what Joe was talking about as far as the hospitals. Whatever hospital, you know, organization or whatever comes into there, the, the big thing that seems to be an issue here every single day, I don't know how many times during the summer, but we have a, a medical helicopter that is constantly shuttling people to and from Modesto. The, the idea of a hospital is, is very exciting, especially when I came, first came to this area, we had three hospitals, now we're down to one, and it is not a trauma center, and that is a big, big deal. You know, we, we, you know, when, when time is of the essence, you know, for saving lives. So, if that, you know, is what is in the plan for that particular medical facility, full speed ahead, I can't, I cannot tell you how, what a benefit that'll be to our community here, so.
I'll pass that along to Colliers.
Very good, thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask if there is anyone within the audience here that would like to come forward and ask any questions? Please, come to the podium after Mr. Lee is done.
Eric Lee, 1199 Atwater Boulevard. I think you just explained to the people in the audience exactly why we need a ladder truck, and also why we need the expertise that CalFire brings to Atwater. This is gonna be a project that will demand a first-class fire department, as well as our police department, so I think we're moving towards that, and I'm really happy to see this project going through.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Helen Amaran. I live at 5,500 Fleming Road. However, I have a business in the area he's referring to, Amaran's Propane Service. My concern is, how are you gonna get services out there? Water, sewer, I know this, I know you're much smarter than I am, but I've been out there for 55 years. I just recently lost my husband. We are in the process of cleaning up the place, having it look presentable, but we would like to stay where we are, and I don't know if that's going to be possible. We are, I'm asking you a question, is that going to be possible?
I don't know what the location of the property is.
It's right where you wanna put the hotel.
There's, there's no properties that were displaced in that area.
I, I mean, I'm, I know, this is a wonderful thing for Atwater. I've stood here 45 years ago, explained the exact same thing I'm explaining right now. Does Merced wanna take over Atwater, or does Atwater wanna take over Merced? Who's, who's gonna take care of who? We've got buildings empty in Atwater. I mean, I, I'm all for progress, I'm, I'm the first one, and I, I praise you guys for doing what you're doing. I would never, ever do what you're doing, but on the other hand, I'm just a little...
I know it's a problem.
Who with them? I know where all the bodies are buried in this town, believe me, and I'm writing a book. No, I just, these are just things that are really my, Jim knows, my concern, they're, I mean, I am concerned. This is a business we've had for 45 years, my kids are in the business, and, and it hurts when you think that somebody can just come along and say, "You're out."
Sorry, I'm a little, you need some help there.
You don't want me to start cussing, is that it?
No, no, no. By the way, we've met before, my name is Scott.
Scott, oh, I called you Jim, well, I call him Rick, so that's okay.
So, so, as, as we were talking earlier, there is gonna be pieces that are existing, they're gonna stay there. Your property is right up in this area, here?
Yeah. I promise to clean it up.
So, you're what's called the Subarea Two, the Canal Creek area. This is not land that John Ferrari's gonna develop, he's gonna develop the area over here.
But we did get along in high school, so I don't think we're gonna do it on that.
So, so to answer your question, there are gonna be existing businesses in this area that are gonna operate just as they do today, it's just that they're gonna now be in the city of Atwater and not in the county anymore.
Well, I will be a good neighbor, I promise that.
Now, your other question was how about utilities? And we have a plan for services, we have plans for utilities, and I guarantee you...
Well, I have a propane business, so I can furnish you with all the cash you need.
I guarantee you, is, is, you know, is, is all these things build up over here, they're gonna have to be served by utilities, and so that's gonna be a big part of the project.
Yeah, well, I've served hospitals before, so.
There you go.
No, I, I'm very sorry, and I, I applaud you guys for doing what you're doing, 'cause there is no way I would put myself in the public eye like you do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your comments. Supervisor McDaniel.
Karen McDaniel, 3380 Shoreline Drive here in Atwater. I am your supervisor for Merced County. I wanted to invite the folks out, we do, I am doing a mobile district office here at City Hall. It's the fourth Thursday of each month, from 1:30 to 3:30. We've also organized, I've reached out, and we've made it a lot bigger. Congressman Costa will have staff here at the same time, Assembly Member Gray will have staff here, Senator Canelo will have staff here, as well as Councilman Brian Raymond has reached out to me, and he would like to be here as well during those two hours. I would like for a lot of folks to come out, stretch it out, that we have to do for three hours, maybe we have to do it twice a month, but it's been my goal to bring government to you and make it more accessible to you, so, just wanna remind everybody of that, and... Mayor, council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, you wanna talk about Ferrari Ranch?
I am wanting to make the expressway.
Yeah, we're loose here, we're loose, we can do it, everyone. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council or make any kind of comments to the project?
Marcus Garza, 1136 Ivy Avenue. My question is, is the jobs you said that were gonna be there, is that just an estimate, or is that exactly how much is gonna be there?
At this point, the only way we can do it is with an estimate. Take a look at how many square feet, kind of retail uses that are in these buildings, and how big the buildings are in terms of... buildings are in terms of size and height and all that. And we can get pretty close with our estimates, but it's an estimate that I think is a concern based on my experience. Those numbers are probably more...
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Very good. Well, that is a very exciting project, and I look very much forward to the progress of this in the coming days. Thank you again very much.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council? Please.
Wow.
Yeah.
Hello. I'm Gloria Perez. I live at 3001 Marvis Drive, Atwater, California. Hi there.
I still have...
Good. I want to, first of all, congratulate the new mayor and the new council. I was up here, I think, last year. Love Atwater, I don't know if you know what Love Atwater is, but basically, it's a, oh, gosh. It's a community organization. We go out and we love on our city. Our city is expanding. I mean, this project is just totally awesome. I mean, right now, we have, last September, we had over 300 volunteers loving on our city. We had about, what, 15 projects? And we're having it again on April 18. So we need volunteers. Also, the reason why I'm here is I know most of you guys know me already about what Love Atwater is all about. But I needed, the reason why I'm here is just to basically say that we can get the volunteers to love on our city, to clean up the roads, to go to Ann Berry and love on them, and show compassion in this city. We hear so much of things that are not positive here, everywhere, you know? And putting this organization together, it just shows so many people the willingness to want to come out. This is all volunteer. This is, nobody gets paid for this. This is volunteer. This basically gets, we get over like 300 volunteers coming out on September 27 and April, to come out just twice a year for four hours to love on their city. Bloss House, I work with Pat, I'm going to talk to you, Pat, and get some more projects. So we're here to serve our city. Like I said before, you guys can't do it alone. You can't, you know? So this is what the organization's about. So, but however, it concerns me because you as leaders, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm probably a little bit, we need to show more leadership out there. We can get individuals out there to volunteer, to do, to love on their city, but we don't have the leadership, you know? It would be awesome to have somebody to come out and, at our opening ceremonies, just to basically say something, how appreciative they are for these volunteers to come out and do something for their city. It would be nice, you know, I know a couple of times Joe went out there, and then I had Brian McDaniel out there, and Brian Raymond came out with his family and stuff, and participated and helped out. And I have businesses, actually, helping out. I have Domino's Pizza, I have Starbucks, I have all these businesses here in this town that the willingness to want to help out. But I really urge some leadership to go out there and just to say, hey, this is awesome, because I want on April 18, not only 300, I want, I want it doubled out there. So, I got only one more minute, so. What else?
And then the trap door opens up underneath you there.
I have t-shirts, we have t-shirts, we have hats for sale, you know, 12 bucks, okay? So we have stuff, we have Daniel, Donald Sines, he does all our work, and he does it for very cheap, you know? So I urge our leaders to come out there. You know, I have my business cards, you know, I wanted to meet with you personally, Mayor, to share with you. I'm having actually a coffee at the Chamber of Commerce on March 4. So if anybody has any questions, or choose, just look at the website, loveatwater.com, and you'll see. And on April 18, not only that we'll be having it here, we'll have it actually all cities, like 45 cities around, will be loving on their city for four hours on April 18. Any questions?
Breathe, breathe.
Trying to.
I will meet with you anytime. Please.
I made it.
You're the first. You're the first. Is there a prize for this?
Yeah.
No, I appreciate the invitation, and yes, I will meet with you anytime. I will give you contact information, and we will, we will sit down, and we will go over Love Atwater, absolutely.
Okay, that's awesome. Can I give you my card right now?
You bet.
Sorry, guys, I'm doing a very... I have it right here.
Thank you so much.
If you could just tell us the exact time, so people could start planning for it now?
Yeah.
And the location where you're going to meet this time?
Okay.
Step to the mic. Step to the mic, and the shot clock's already run out on you, so keep having a...
It did. I know, I'm hurrying, I'm hurrying. Give you one. Hi, how are you?
Hi. I'm very excited to receive you.
Wouldn't never have guessed it.
I have to be. Okay, what was, oh, your question, okay. April 18, and it's going to be at, the rally starts at 8 o'clock in the morning at Ralston Park. Eight to noon. I've got my audience right here.
Okay, very good. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Rivera. Yeah. And Mr. Rivera had one more question for you.
No, that was the question I asked her when she was up here. I wanted to make sure she got it out there.
Oh, okay, very good.
So everybody can plan for it.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
You're not going to talk about Love Atwater, are you?
No. My name is Daniela Vineyard. I live at 3254 New Mexico Avenue. And I would like to bring forth the issue of our lack of lighting in our sitting city streets, particularly our crosswalks. And I have provided pictures for, of the three major crosswalks that I pass by every day on my short drive to Mitchell K. Six, where I work. If you wouldn't mind if they got passed out. Mr. Mayor, would you mind?
If you want, yeah, if you want to give them to Scott there.
They're labeled. Okay. Two of the three pictures are actually by school campuses, and they're labeled on the back for you. One's by Atwater High, and all three of these were taken at 6:00 AM this morning. So, and I know there's no children that are up and walking to school at 6:00 AM, but if those crosswalks are invisible at 6:00 AM, then it's just the same or worse at 11 or 12 at night. And this is the, this is the first one. This is by Atwater High. And this is actually a crosswalk that is lightable when you press the button, but you wouldn't know otherwise, because it's not very well lit. So I think that's a problem. The second picture is by the 99 cent store, and that's how dark it is at 6:00 AM, which means that's how dark it is at 11 or 12 at night, and there's absolutely no light by this crosswalk. And then, the last picture is the crosswalk by Mitchell K. Six School, and it's also a lighted crosswalk. But again, you wouldn't hardly notice, there is one light, but if you're driving by it, it's really hard to tell. My problem is that if the lights are capable when you press the button, but if they're not being used properly, or they're not being lit until someone needs to cross, then those pedestrians and people who are driving aren't paying close enough attention at the time until the button's pressed. So you have people that are driving, and then when the button's pressed, they either slam on their brakes because someone needs to cross, or they're continuing to drive. So I think that, you know, it's becoming an issue in our city. And those aren't just the only three pictures. It's all across Atwater City. And I know that budget will become an issue in this particular situation by putting extra lighting up, or even something simple as repainting the lines. But again, it's not just those three pictures, it's around the whole entire city. And I'm sure if you guys drive by late at night or early in the morning, you'll be able to tell. But my concern is, is the budget more of a concern, or is losing a member of the community a bigger concern? So you have to weigh your odds. And I'm not asking for this to be done tomorrow, or overnight, or in a week, but even doing one crosswalk a month, configuring lighting, or even repainting, it's worth more than losing somebody that's in our community due to not having the lighting for our crosswalks. And it's not just around schools, it's around the whole entire city. So that's what I would like to bring to the attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And very well presented and well noted. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Arissa Higgins, and I live at 2029 Woodside Court. Honestly, I'm very terrified to speak to you today, because as you can tell, I'm probably one of the youngest people in this room. I don't have something to present as happy as Love Atwater, or as life crucial, I guess you can say, sorry for lack of words, as crosswalks for our children, but it is something that concerns everyone in this room. So, I, as an underage high schooler, do not meet the requirements to be appointed as a commission member. That being so, we do not believe that anybody who does not live up to the professional title and status that is required of these positions should be appointed either. That is why we are here. It was brought to our attention that Mr. Fred Warhol is guilty of multiple cases of bigotry. Bigotry that consisted of email sharing and professional, and personal attacks on individuals and social communities. Social communities that we can find not only all around Atwater and Merced County, but right here in this very room. Let me be little, and more specific, all right, let me, let me be a little more specific for you. He has made multiple attacks regarding race, gender, and sexual orientation. I would take the time to quote these statements right here for all of you, but instead, you can check them on the Sunstar's website, and look at his comments on there, for all of the public across the world to see. His statements would represent Atwater as a whole. Would you like Atwater to be viewed as a community that discriminates against multiple communities that we can find in our very own community? As a final statement, I would like to refer to the first part of my address. The actions taken online by Warhol remind me of those taken by the high school bullies I have witnessed myself. I feel that should be required, I feel that he should be required to follow the rules posted on the Sunstar's comment section, as well as follow the morals of zero discrimination. Thank you for listening, and I mean no disrespect.
And none taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Poppy Ferris. I'm at 241 Ocean Court in Atwater. And today, I wanted to address the mayor and the council regarding a prayer walk that we do have done in the last two years in the city of Atwater, called God Belongs in My City. We've had, developed a relationship with the city, probably starting August or September of 2012, when we started, our youth group started to come over and pray here at City Hall, once a month on Thursdays, and then we connected with a ministry called God Belongs in My City, and we brought it to California. We were the first in the state. And we tried to get a feel of the things that were important to not only our city as a whole, but our city employees, and pray for those things specifically. We wanted to address the council today, and the mayor, because he's our new mayor, and he's not been a part of God Belongs in My City yet, but we're hoping that this will be a year that you'll join us. Frank and the police and James Vineyard have been really crucial the last several years, and we appreciate your involvement. To let you also know that we are committed to praying for this city, for the businesses in our city, for the schools, the churches, employees, and yourselves. And we just wanted to extend that commitment to you again this year, and hope that you'll join us on May 9. This year, we're going to do it a little bit differently. We've been ending here at City Hall, and enjoying the company of the police department. They've been here to welcome us at the end of our walk. And this year, we're going to start kind of in different locations around the city, but a good portion of our people will start here at City Hall and end at Veterans Park. And so, it starts at 10:00 AM on that day, May 9, and we should end around 3 with a big celebration of how much God loves us. And that's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will see you there at 10:00 AM. Thank you very much for the invitation. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Mr. Rivera.
I'd like to pull item 11 for discussion.
Item 11 will be pulled for further consideration. Is there any others? I would like to also pull number 12 for information. If there are none others, consider a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Vineyard is the second, but we'll make the mayor pro tem the initiator.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
Rivera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so we have 11.
Number 11 and number 12.
Okay. Under petitions, Peggy Heller Elementary School requests for assistance with Fundren, fundraiser to support outdoor education.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, as well as the public. Thank you for the opportunity to elaborate a little bit on this agenda item. Just a brief summary is, in regards to our 3K for Camp, I'm the principal of Peggy Heller School. My name's Nathan Hickson, and I really appreciate the opportunity to invite you out to Peggy Heller School the morning of February 28. It's our second annual 3K for Camp. It's a fundraiser for sixth-grade outdoor school. I don't want to take a poll of everybody here, but Green Meadows has been a part of our community for years. Many in the audience may have attended Green Meadows as a sixth grader back in the day. And to achieve this experience for our sixth graders, this is a fundraising opportunity. We're going to run the neighborhood the Saturday morning. We're going to serve breakfast, t-shirts, and we're encouraging the entire public, as well as council members, to come on out and support the cause. This is our second annual. We had about 300 turn out last year, which was almost overwhelming. We almost couldn't meet the need for our first go-around. So we're very optimistic about this year. So we are petitioning support from the cadets and the explorers. We've reached out to Officer Vargas, as well as the council. Hopefully, we can work together again this year. Just a few notes here, not only is this a Peggy Heller event, but it is a community event. We have reached out to vendors, and the response has been tremendous. We're really excited to pull it off again this year, and just encourage you to come out. Thank you for the opportunity to elaborate.
If you, one moment. Pro tem Bergman.
Yeah, I just was wondering if you could tell us-
Yeah, I just was wondering if you could tell us what time the check-in is and the cost to participate.
Absolutely. I'm going to leave you some flyers here. If you'd like to sign up and cut a check. No pressure there, but registration begins, registration begins at 7:30 at the Peggy Heller Campus, which is located on Lakeview Drive. We're going to start the run at 8 o'clock sharp. And last year, everybody was able to complete the course, the 3K, or the 1.86 miles in about 20 minutes. And then we get back to school, we play some music, and we eat breakfast together. So 8 o'clock, the run starts, and we'll wrap up around 9:30. But you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like.
Very good. And the cost?
The cost is $20. We actually have an à la carte option here, but we're encouraging everyone to participate fully. $20 will get you a t-shirt with all of the sponsors on the back. It's a sharp shirt. You get to participate in the run, and then we feed you breakfast as well. $20. Best deal in town.
Well, I'll pay you the 20 bucks, but I ain't running.
If I may elaborate, it is a fun run, so you may walk. A lot of parents came out with kids in strollers, and...
Man, that's too early in the morning.
That's too early, huh? We'll have coffee, too.
Mr. Rivero.
No, I just wanted to make sure. And if they do opt not to run, they can just purchase the breakfast, is that right?
Absolutely, yeah. Breakfast is going to be $5. The t-shirt will cost you 10. So just all of those à la carte options. 5 for the run, 10 for the shirt, 20 for the Cadillac version.
It sounds good.
It was a hit last year. So we're very optimistic. We're hoping, just like Love Atwater and others, we're hoping to double our numbers this year.
Yeah. Well, you know, the Camp Green Meadows program is just a great program. I remember shipping my kids off to that and loving the week-long silence. But no, it is a great program. And, you know, I can remember even when I, you know, back in the Stone Age, when I went off to camp in sixth grade.
It's definitely the experience of a lifetime.
Yeah, it's great. It's a great deal there. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Informational items. Police Department activities and projects for the month of January 2015.
Did you want a motion for the request?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to make a motion and to approve the request.
I apologize. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Call for the question.
I didn't hear the second. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Vineyard.
Just a little on me.
Rivero?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, this is for the month of January 2015. We had a very busy month, the officers did. We had 2,015 calls for service. We had three reported robberies, 37 burglaries, 46 thefts, six grand thefts, 10 assaults, three assault with deadly weapons, one child molestation investigation, four resisting officers' arrests, 10 DUIs. We had eight stolen vehicles with four still outstanding. We had five reports of shots fired that were legitimate shots fired calls. And we had 153 citations and 127 arrests for the month. The notable cases, there were several. Usually, I try to just put a few on there. This month was very busy. And so we were on the 31st of January, I'll start with this one. We had officers dispatched over the 1,400 block of Fifth Street regarding subjects that were trying to go in to unlock vehicles. As the officers arrived on scene, the officers observed subjects matching the description, attempted to take them down at gunpoint, at which time, one of the subjects eventually fled on scene. As he was running away, he took out a firearm and threw the firearm out. He was taken into custody and was reported as stolen firearm, was a fully loaded stolen firearm. The subject was taken into custody. Officers chased this guy, this guy down. He was a very dangerous person, too. The person was a gang member.
Lieutenant Joseph, if I might, was that the one also? That particular individual was a teenager, validated a gang member?
Yeah, there's a couple of them in that one, too. Yeah, that was one of them. We also had an incident on the 22nd of January where officers were dispatched to the Walmart regarding a, they found one of their workers unconscious. During the investigation, the officers responded, and they discovered that the, there was three individuals, actually two inside the Walmart and one outside. They went in there, they were attempting to steal items. At that time, the person, the victim confronted them, and the knife was pulled on the victim, and the person then punched the victim, knocked the victim out. During the investigation, detectives did a fabulous job on this. During the investigation, they worked long and hard, working on leads and everything else. And today, as a matter of fact, they ended up arresting one of the suspects, and they're working on arresting the other two. They're all off from Merced, and it's, it's one of those, these are really dangerous guys as well, and they were going to continue doing what they're doing. So I give credit to the detectives on this one. On the 12th of January, officers were dispatched to the bus stop over there on Witten Way and Bellevue, reports of shots fired. As the officers arrived on scene, they found a casing in the area. They ended up investigating, finding out that one of the two subjects confronted each other. They were about to start a fight. One of the subjects pulled out a weapon, and as a threat, fired one round in the air. Officers and detectives worked on this investigation, and eventually found the suspect and recovered the weapon as well, and took him into custody. We also, on the 18th of January, we were dispatched to a shooting at the 2,800 block of Secretaryate Drive. Officers located a victim with a gunshot wound, suffering from gunshot wounds to the leg. The suspect, the victim, excuse me, was a gang member, cooperative. The officers during the investigation located 13 shell casings in the area. And one of those bullets struck a residence that just missed a child by inches. There was this child just in the area. And again, it's an investigation ongoing. The victim, the quote-unquote victim is, you know, not being very cooperative with investigators at this time. On the 3rd of January, we were dispatched to East Bellevue and Crest Road regarding a possible stab wound victim. During that investigation, officers thought it was a gang-related type incident. We found out it was a domestic incident. The girlfriend got mad at the boyfriend and stabbed him. And she was taken into custody. On the 15, on the 10th of January, we were dispatched to Chatham Place. I was actually called out to this one, too. And during the incident, we had a subject inside the residence that called 911, requesting officers to respond to his residence because something was happening and being attacked. He wasn't clear. So to make a long story short, during the investigation, we all arrived on scene, we surrounded the area. He told the officers or dispatcher, the door is unlocked. We did confirm the door was unlocked, but no one was coming out. We found out from family members that he had several firearms registered to him, which we confirmed, one was an AR-15. And apparently, he was looking to do a suicide by cop. And we didn't make entry because of the AR-15. And we ended up notifying Merced County Sheriff SWAT, which I want to thank. Again, they came out there and assisted us during the entry. And as a result, after several hours of containing the area, I'm talking about six or seven hours, eventually, we made entry, and we found the subject deceased with a self-inflicted gunshot wound. And that is so far. I can keep going if you want me to, but I think that's about it, you know?
I think we get the idea.
It's a busy month. It was a busy month. We're getting, we're getting very busy.
I want to thank you again. And, you know, if we could parade every officer in here and line them up in front of the audience and in front of the TV cameras and everything, I think we'd all want to give them a standing ovation. I think what this police department does for this city and for these citizens, and, I mean, every, every incident you're talking about there, it all involves a gun, shots fired, violence everywhere. And I'm sure these guys are really, I would be the happiest guy on the face of the earth when I clock out at night and I'm able to go home to my, my family. Again, a job for an extremely well-done job by all. I, I can't, I just go on and on about this, but the cops in this town are without a doubt the best there is on the face of the earth. And we are very fortunate to have who we have. Thank you very much. Sam, Sam, if you want to hold for a second. Mr. Rivero?
I want to thank you as well, but can you provide us some information as far as the number, the number of shootings and where they occurred, like on a map, let's show exactly the exact hotspots where they are? Because I keep hearing certain areas all the time. And it's a great job what you do to arrest them after the fact, but I'd like to see us head in the direction. I know we have one, I think, one camera, and we have several license plate readers, but I think we need to start looking at these hotspot areas for prevention rather than action after the, after the fact. And so I like to see a hotspot area where we can really focus on and take care of this problem, and send a message, hey, if you want to come in from Merced or these other areas and do shootings, you guys are already sending that message that you're catching them. But maybe we can prevent them from even doing it if they know that we have cameras out in these areas and license plate readers to make it, so they'll know it's more difficult than what you think. We're going to, we're already catching you, but we don't want you to even come in here. Okay? So could, could I, or the council?
Well, we have, we have, we already do that. When it comes to the mapping, our investigators, we have those. We don't reveal that to the public too much because we, that's pretty, regarding our investigation, we do have those areas. Manpower is an issue, too, if we have hotspots, but the hotspots are, I'll be honest with you, are kind of scattered right now. There's, there's always a determined area. That's a famous limelight. But, I mean, we are, we work our, we work on those as we speak with our units. When we had our gang in it, hopefully, we'll get all those back into service once we get the manpower going.
And so how many license plate readers are in service right now? Are there not?
You know, sir, I don't know. You got a, you know, Chief Feature might have more idea on that one, because when it comes to license plate readers, I think they're all us.
And then cameras?
We only have two license plate readers that are almost obsolete. It's hard to find parts for them. There's one, I really don't want to say where they're at, but we have two working right now. That's all we have.
Thanks.
Mayor pro tem Bergman.
Thank you. And I also want to echo, you know, I'm, I'm extremely proud of the group of officers we have. In my opinion, we have one of the greatest groups of officers in the valley, if not the state. But I want to address one thing, and I know it happened, you didn't address it because it happened in February, but we had a tragic incident on Schaefer.
Yeah, that was the one, yeah, it was for February.
That was, that's coming for February, but we had a hit and run where a young man was killed. And I know we have three outstanding detectives that, I believe, within two days, they put in the work, they found the individual, and they made an arrest. And I just want to thank our detectives Cardoza, Brum, and Viera tonight for the dedication, the hard work, and the extra time they put in. They're, again, they are probably one of the greatest groups of detectives around, and I'm damn proud to have them in our city.
You bet.
I will pass that message to you.
And for those, thank you very much, Lieutenant Joseph. We're going to institute a program here in the very near future. For those that don't know, we're going to begin the Stop the Violence walks. And this is all part of Feed Changing Lives. Reverend Don Ramsey, who heads up that group, it's in the infancy stage, but we're going to get this thing going. And, yeah, the Secretaryate Determining, Kelso, Crest Avenue, that's our target area for starting our walks. And we're going to show this community, you know, that we care, and we're going to make sure that this, this violence that is going on in Merced area doesn't bleed over so much over here. But by golly, we're sure seeing a lot of it here. And so we're going to get proactive on that. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Jim, you brought up a good point, and so did Joe. One of the things that we've discussed before, I know Larry Bergman and Jim Vineyard and I have discussed this previously. These things are occurring in certain areas of Atwater, and most of these individuals do not own the property they live on. They're either squatting on it, or they're tenants. And I think the city needs to look at a way of enforcing the landlords to clean up their properties and get rid of these individuals. If they don't, and I do believe the city, and I think the attorney can work on this, that we can take their properties under an abatement ordinance. And I think that's something we really need to look at, because once that starts, that tends to make the owners of the property realize that they have a responsibility to the city to maintain their properties and keep these people from living there. I have about 25 units insured over on the determined Secretaryate area. The lady that owns them lives in the Bay Area, and she has an onsite manager that she provided a laptop computer to. And she communicates with her on a daily and a weekly basis, and comes down once a month to check on her property. She's very cognizant about the individuals that live there. And I think if we start something like that, we may, we may get rid of a lot of these problems, because these people have to have a place or have a place to live. We take that place from them, they'll move on. So it might be something else we could look at, too.
Noted. Thanks. Yes, sir. Please step to the microphone here, if you would, sir. Well, I know, but people at home can hear you.
I'm Robert Rains, 1030 Summerfield Drive, and I want to praise our cops. I screwed up one time, and before I could get that house de-armed, they were there. So I just wanted to praise them for it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Next agenda item.
Funding and budget matters. Treasurer's report for the month of December 2014.
You've been very patient, Mr. Heller.
I think I'll show up at 5:30. Yeah, the law of finance, the 3:30, so we appreciate it.
And we appreciate your service to the community, sir. Thank you so much.
Forty-six years. Can you believe that?
At the same pay raise.
Anyway, good evening, mayor and councilmen. For you is the treasurer's report for December. January will be in March. We hope February will be together.
I guess the only comment I have with respect to the warrants and what have you here is the amount of money, and I just, mainly for the information to the public, is our animal control fees, sky-high $20,271.50. That's, yeah, that's, that's really nothing. But that's, that's a lot of money. That's, that's what it costs the city for the strays and what have you that we have to take to the animal shelter. So I just wanted to, that's, yeah, that's a quarterly figure right there. And that's pretty much it. Any other questions of Mr. Heller? Comments? Motion to move the report?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December.
And I'll, I'll second you. Call for the question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next agenda item, please.
Public hearings. Ordinance number CS959, amending Title VIII of the Atwater Municipal Code relating to health and safety to add Chapter 8.48 entitled Camping, Sleeping, Storage of Personal Property, and Panhandling.
This is an agenda item that has gone through a lot of scrutiny by the city attorney, and has gotten a lot of input from around the state on just exactly what would be entailed to an ordinance such as this. So we're bringing it forward tonight in a public hearing. Lieutenant Joseph, if you want to go ahead and lead off?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a reopening of public hearing, receiving the testimony given regarding ordinance number CS959, and waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS959, adding Chapter 8.48, which is camping, sleeping, storage of personal property, and panhandling, to the Title VIII of the Atwater Municipal Code. The background on this, at our meeting in December 8, the city council moved to continue the public hearing to the regular city council meeting on February 9, 2015. Council directed staff to evaluate and make amendments as necessary to Title VIII, Health and Safety of the Atwater Municipal Code, to include chapter regarding regulations governing camping, sleeping, storage of personal property, and panhandling within the city of Atwater. Ordinance number 959 amends Title VIII, Health and Safety, to include Chapter 8.48, Camping, Sleeping, Storage, and Personal, of Personal Property, and Panhandling to the city, to the Atwater Municipal Code. Analysis on this implementing an ordinance to control the nuisance is hereby deemed necessary. In addition, adding a chapter to the Atwater Municipal Code concerning camping, sleeping, storage of personal property, and panhandling within the city of Atwater will provide avenues for recovering costs associated with violators, and also reducing public works department, as well as patrol officers, time spent regarding these issues. And that's all I got.
Comments from the, from the council? Comments from the, from the, uh, council? Before I open it up for a public hearing? If none, oh, Mr. Vineyard.
I just wondered how this affects the fill-the-boot program, or if it does.
The which program?
The fill-the-boot program from the, from the fire department that they do.
Well, it's funny you should mention that because that's one of my questions as well. And, uh, we can address that, uh, if we, we can open up to the public and then we'll come back.
Sure, that's fine. We could do that.
All right. At this time, open the public hearing for the ordinance CS959, camping ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, pro or con? Seeing no one come forward, close the public hearing. Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if, were the fill-the-boot program that the fire department, um, does, how that would, does it fit under this program? Does it?
That was something that probably the city, the city attorney can probably address regarding the ordinance.
Sure, and I know that one of the changes, um, that my partner actually made to this, I was not involved in the changing of this, sorry, but I know that, that, uh, we looked at it again to make sure that it was not going to prohibit any sort of activities such as fill-the-boot or other charitable-type organizations. And if you look at Section 8.48.050, it specifically discusses the circumstances in which, uh, panhandling is prohibited. And it has to be aggressive, it has to be threatening, it has to, um, be persistent when you are, uh, when you receive a negative response. So the things that, that we're talking about in terms of filling the boot or other charitable-type organizations are not going to fall within these, um, parameters. And so this is really meant to be narrowly tailored, um, which is required by the law, to ensure that it is not, um, overbroad and it is limited to avoiding negative interactions with people who are aggressive and, um, in their solicitation efforts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rivero.
Yeah, I, I also like to add, yeah, we're, we're talking about, um, nonprofit organizations. Now, there's some cases in which the nonprofits are selling, I mean, some of the youth in the community, uh, get permission from the different, uh, establishments to sell candy bars or whatever. Now, I wanted to make sure that that's not going to affect them, but we have another issue too besides that. We have some that are in the parking lots, in the dark, in, in the dark parking lot sometimes, and it kind of scares some, some people. Where they come out and say, you want to buy tamales, you want to buy something else. And I saw, uh, one where there was several individuals in parking lots, um, approaching people. And so they, they were in a, they were, they were a nonprofit. Uh, and in a, in a way, it's almost a form of panhandling, but you're offering a product, so therefore it gets away with not being considered panhandling. So, uh, is that, is that also addressed here for people? Because i-if they're offering a product, is it really panhandling then?
No, that's actually solicitation. So the difference here, this ordinance, as I was just scanning it to look and see if there was a distinction between nonprofit versus profit or, or what the, the characters, the characteristics are. And that is not specifically called out, but if you look at the last section of 8.48.050, and this is the language I think that was added, and it says that panhandling is not prohibited when it is limited to passively standing or sitting with a sign or other indication that one is seeking donations without addressing solicitation to any specific person other than a response to that person. So again, it's, it's limited, it's allowed if it's passive, it's just not allowed if it's aggressive and, um, threatening. Um, in terms of the distinction with what you're talking about, when people are approaching with a product, that goes to solicitation. And honestly, I have not looked to the code to see if you have an anti-solicitation provision. If you do not have an anti-solicitation provision, then we can talk about whether or not that's something that the council wants us to examine to make sure that if we are going to introduce an ordinance, it falls within the parameters that are permitted under, under the state law. But that's a different scenario. This is basically asking for money as opposed to selling something.
Thank you. Um, the one thing that I was concerned with, and maybe it's, uh, in paragraph E of, um, 8.48.020.
020?
Right.
Okay.
Um, where we were talking about, uh, public property shall mean property, blah, 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 and all that. But the very last, uh, right there where it said walkways, and I made a note, does that include sidewalks?
It would include sidewalks. So it's anything that's basically owned by the public or used, um, for public purposes.
Okay.
Um, then also it talks about, um, uh, property that's privately owned, uh, but open to the public. So that would be like shopping centers and things like that.
Okay. I also, uh, wanted to know, uh, as to whether or not we see, uh, on occasion, um, folks that are standing on a street corner, what have you, uh, and I don't know if this falls under solicitation necessarily, but for funerals, um, funeral expenses, that type of thing. There, there seems to be, you know, a lot of that sometimes, you know, to cover funeral expense, people are out there. Would that fall under solicitation also, or is that a panhandling type of thing? Is there a gray area?
To me, that would be more panhandling because you're basically asking for money. Um, but I'm not sure, and we'd have to look at what the definitions are. And, and again, if you don't have an anti-solicitation ordinance, which I saw the, the city manager shake his head, so I'm not sure that you have one. But you have to define what falls within the solicitation, um, definition of solicitation, so we would see whether or not that applies. Is that, and again, if that's a concern that you have, um, and you want to avoid that, we can see if whether, whether we can do that without violating free speech rights and things like that.
Well, I recall, uh, some time ago, the council addressed, um, this type of activity and, you know, whether or not it was a valid type of an activity, you know? How many, how many times can little Freddie die in, in a month is kind of the, was the attitude, you know, or whoever it is. Um, so is this a valid type of a thing? Is, are, are we actually being compassionate and giving, uh, funds to, um, help lay somebody to rest or whatever, you know? Um, I, I just don't know. I don't know whether or not this would be appropriate to, you know, make this inclusive.
Well, and as I'm looking at the definition of panhandling, we define that to also include solicitation. So I think it's going to be, um, a fine line, but it does say here that panhandling does not include, um, sale of, by legitimate nonprofit organizations. So that's where your nonprofit question comes in, um, such as Girl Scout cookies, discount coupons, candy bars, or similar things like that. Um, I'm sorry, I did not memorize, I did not commit this to memory, so it's all kind of falling in as you're asking these questions. But, um, if you want to define certain, um, limitations, like, we could revise this and say that you are only allowed to ask for the same thing, you know, so many times a year. Like, twice a year you can have, uh, a fundraiser or something like that for fill-the-boot, you know, that type of thing. Um, we could do that so that you could avoid the repeat offenders that may fall within this. Um, so I, I mean, if, if there are certain things that you want us to, uh, include in here or modifications that you want us to make, we can certainly look into it and make sure that it's legal for us to do so.
One of the modifications I was curious, uh, to making, uh, was also when it comes to camping, uh, to include motor vehicles. A lot, a lot of people tend to be transient in that respect, and so there should be some type of language, in my estimation, that would include, uh, vehicles, uh, you know, i-if somebody is in fact living out of a vehicle. You know, where, where they would park and for how long, whether or not that vehicle is registered or not, that type of thing.
Yes, because the way that we define camping is, um, occupation or pitching of camping facilities. And camping facilities are tents, tents, hunts, and temporary shelters. So I guess the question is whether a temporary shelter, uh, whether a vehicle would qualify as a temporary shelter for purposes of this. So, um, we could definitely modify the definition of, um, camping, camping facilities. Um, or we could expand the definition in A to include motor vehicles. Okay, so we'll do that, and then we can also, um, what's the, the pleasure of the council in terms of trying to avoid the repeat offenders for, the funerals?
Uh, well, I just, I, I'm just making that as a, uh, as, as a matter of discussion right now.
Okay.
I, I, I don't have any specifics to that, but, uh, uh, the only other question I would have also, uh, with respect to parks, um, you know, we have really nice parks in our city. And I, I would hate to get into this scenario where, well, let me just kind of give you a little background. This last week, I spent a full week in San Jose, and downtown San Jose is loaded full of campers in the park, if you will. And I didn't see families, that type of thing, that were, uh, coming to utilize those, those parks. I don't want to see the same kind of a repeat type of thing in our city. Uh, one of the things that concerns me about that is that, uh, while we would try to mitigate that type of activity as best we can, what I'm afraid of is, you know, the drug abusers that come into the parks. Uh, because that is an activity that takes place in those parks, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if that happens, I would hate to see, uh, a five-year-old kid, or an adult for that matter, in bare feet, all of a sudden get jammed with a hypodermic needle out there, that type of thing. So, you know, these are the kind of things that are, are concerns to me, and I'm not sure exactly what the proper solution would be. Uh, I only know that I would not like to see, um, the parks, uh, available to that type of activity. And I know it's difficult, we're talking about how the cops are getting thrashed with all types of other calls. An enforcement mechanism to, say, go through Veterans Park and make sure that we're cleaning out any undesirables out of there that are, you know, using it as, as, as home. That type of thing.
Well, in terms of the, the park, um, camping in parks and things like that, that's specifically included in this ordinance because the definition of public property includes parks. So this ordinance, um, could be used to, um, rectify anybody that's camping in parks. But in terms of cleanup efforts, um, I'm not sure how to go about that other than, um, the Parks and Rec Department, you know, things like that, we can see.
Right.
That all has to do with, um, with their job duties and tasks and, and whether that includes cleaning of the parks and things like that.
I understand.
Maybe we should contact Lev Rippon and make that, um, a request for something that they could encompass within one of their projects, something like that, you know?
Right, okay. All right, I've had my say. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Uh, Mr. Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you were mentioning, I, I like to see some type of a, a limit. Uh, I mean, fill-the-boot happens once a year, but even if you had it for twice a year, that would be fine, uh, and those type of things. And that way, people who are legitimately, uh, because I know there's been people out there, some might not be credible, but there have been some that they've lost a family member. I know there was one youth in this community who was killed, and they were having a hard time, and, uh, and they felt they were harassed. And this was years and years ago, but they felt they were harassed. And I don't want to see that happen because they were, uh, they were strapped for money. And there's legitimate people out there trying to ask for donations. And so I'd like to see us at least open it for, if you have those hard case situations that, that the individuals can, can ask for donations. So, uh, you know, once or twice, I mean, a person dies once, uh, you know, you hope another family member doesn't, but... So I think that that would cover that situation.
And perhaps, uh, along those same lines, um, um, when it comes to likes of fill-the-boot program or any of the others, you know, that are, you know, legitimate programs, as long as they make notice to the, to the city, uh, within a reasonable amount of time, you know, maybe a week, outside of their event, something along those lines, to notice that something like that is going to be coming and it receives the, uh, approval that it's supposed to have.
So you want, you want people that are going to conduct legitimate fundraising efforts within the city, um, to come here to get approval?
If that's appropriate under this particular ordinance?
Well, I'm not sure that it's appropriate under this particular ordinance because again, this particular ordinance is aimed at trying to avoid the, um, aggressive...
Right.
Inappropriate, you know, solicit, the threatening solicitation-type activity as opposed to a legitimate fundraising effort of a, of an organization. So it would only fall under here if the people were violating the, the procedures.
And we've pretty much covered that.
Correct. That's exactly what this is for, the street corners with the signs asking for money. We want Atwater to not be like Merced, so we want a little bit of teeth in this ordinance so we can stop, you know, the street corner guys from that. All the others is, you know, I don't consider that panhandling when you're, you're out there with the boot or you're out there, you know? So this is just to stop the, the street corner, so we're not like Merced.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, I suppose at this point, we're looking to come back, uh, in our next meeting with appropriate, uh, verbiage to the changes that we have proposed?
Yes, and then just to clarify, then, you're not going to require anybody that's doing legitimate fundraising to come and get city approval? Okay, great.
Okay. Mr. Petru.
Oh, next one?
Oh, yeah. Your light was on there, I just wanted to get it... Okay, so there's no further action, uh, needed to be taken here?
Well, yeah, we're going to just be continuing the public hearing.
We're just going to be continuing. Very good.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting, very good.
You need a motion for that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Call for a question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anybody like to take 10 minutes to get your legs, blood flowing again and everything? Let's do that. Let's come back at 8:30.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, I know.
Eighteen. Just a real quick verbal report on the Duke Council meeting for Brian Raymond.
I know it got, it got real quiet. Okay, let's bring the meeting back to order and we're at number eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Members of the Council, this was requested by Councilman Raymond in regards to going back to two council meetings a month. As you all are aware, if we were to amend this ordinance after the first reading, thirty days, after the second reading, another thirty days, and then the implementation thirty days after that, it would be May first. According to the current ordinance, May first is when we go back to two council meetings a month. So it actually would be a waste of time to try to amend this ordinance because the date that it was, it would be completed would be the actual date this ordinance comes into effect. So just to let everybody know that May first in 2015, we're beginning having two council meetings a month. We happy to answer any questions?
Oh, Mayor Protem Bergman.
Thank you. City Manager, we originally did this to, as a cost savings measure. Is there, would it be too difficult to determine what the cost savings have been? Just to see if there was in fact a cost savings or this was a, an attempt that really didn't pan out?
Yeah, we can, I can provide you some figures here in the next week or so, but looking at the council packets, so the last two council packets and the times that we've been spending here, I'm not sure that it was much of a savings, but I'll get you those figures.
Well, just so we know, I mean, I'm not afraid to admit I was wrong if it turns out that the savings were as, you know, but I would just like to see.
I was probably wrong too because I'm the one that put this on the agenda, so.
I can only tell you that I looked at.
I told you so?
Well.
Yeah, that's what you were gonna say, huh?
No, 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 no. What, we're not gonna talk about the town hall, are we?
No.
Oh, okay. No, the amount of money for legal fees did go down, and I verified that with our expenditures here, so that was, that was a concern.
Yeah, I truly think the big savings will be in the, in the.
Told yourself.
I think the big savings is when we go paperless is where the true savings will be, so.
Right, and, 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 you know, those, those type of savings and, and other things, so I think in the, in the next couple of months, especially when we enter into March, we're gonna be getting into some budgetary discussions and this type of thing, and so I, I think we're gonna all collectively, you know, put on our, our creative hats here and, and we'll find even more savings here, hopefully, because Lord knows we need them, so, um, okay. Anything other to add?
Mr. Mayor, just to add on to that, you know, the, the important thing was is, is everybody thought outside the box for a little bit and tried something. If it, if it had worked, everybody'd be, you know, patting themselves on the back, and it did work a little bit, so the important thing is we just have to continue thinking outside the box, so.
Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I believe Mr. Raymond had campaigned on this issue too, and so I think that's one of the reasons why he may have placed on the agenda. As I recall, it was a three to two vote to go to this, the, and then there was talk of go, and, and when it ended to maybe continue it, and so I see no problem with right now and until Mr. Raymond comes back to place this on the agenda to, as, as it was placed for Mr., Mr. Raymond, and I'll make the motion to, for this ordinance, because the, the whole reasoning was, is that I think he wants to end it now rather than wait till May to decide, so, and this gets the process rolling for that, even though in, in May you say it will end. But there was discussion at the meeting where it passed that they would take a look at it and see about continuing it, and I think the reason that he may have put this on here is because he didn't want to have it continued. He wanted to be sure that it didn't, so, I mean, he's not here to speak for it tonight, so, other than, I, I just say I would just, I'd like to make the motion just to have it go forward to see, just in case, I mean, that was his wish, and so as a new council member, and just because, I mean, I, my sympathies go out to him for his family, and he couldn't be here tonight, so, it was important to him, and so I, I'd like to see us maybe just passing this, and then he can discuss it more when he comes back next week. That way it's on the agenda.
City Manager.
Well, the key here, Councilmember Rivera, is if they, we wanna amend this ordinance, we have to go through the process. The correct process is the first reading, thirty days is the second reading.
Exactly.
Thirty days later is implemented. That's May.
Right, and, and I understand that.
So.
I mean, either way, it was his, but it was, what I'm saying is it was his wish, he campaigned on the issue, and I don't see anything wrong with it going forward, but I mean, if the council's already in agreement that they don't want to continue it, okay, at the time that it passed on a three to two vote, there was discussion that they would consider it at that time moving forward, and I think Mr. Raymond wants it down, either way, just to say right now, yes, either continues forward or it doesn't, and I think it was one of his campaign pledges. So I'm, like I said, I'm not gonna speak anymore for him other than he's not here tonight, and he wished this to be on the agenda, so. And, and one, one last thing is whenever you talk about money and you're taking away the transparency of, of politics, nothing is worth, is worth taking away the complete transparency, and so I think the two meetings a month where people can, we don't have packets this thick and people can stay longer, I mean, look how the crowds cleared out tonight because they get tired, they don't wanna see the rest of, they don't wanna wait till the end of it, so I think that helps with transparency too because you have this, so, but I'm, I'm up to, if the council wants to, it's too bad he's not here since he's the one that placed on the agenda.
Deputy City Attorney?
I just wanted to note for the record that this is just listed as an, a report and an update, so it's not an action item.
Okay.
So it's, it's not the time to make a motion, but again, this will end in, in May unless further action is taken by the council to continue it.
All right.
Mr. Van.
Yeah, just also expound on it, in talking to Mr. Raymond, he did want more information on it, but he did talk about if he understood, once he understood it right, he was gonna pull it, so, once he became, got more information.
Yeah, and. He just couldn't be here, so.
Yeah, he just couldn't be here, so.
Councilmember Vera, you're, you're correct. I, I too also campaigned on this, but the practicality of it right now with, as it has been laid out, really doesn't make it worth our time for the moment here, so we'll just do as we are doing, and it'll sunset and we'll move on, so. Any other discussion? Okay, next item.
Reports and presentations from staff, fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget review.
Oh, this is gonna be fun. Laquinda?
Honorable Mayor and members of city council, today we will be going over mid-year adjustments for fiscal year fourteen fifteen, so we will start off with the budget overview for general fund, other city funds, and proposed budget adjustments. So for fiscal year fourteen fifteen, we adopted that budget on June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, total budget is thirty-nine million. Regular updates were provided to city council and audit and finance committee during October and November. Then mid-year budget adjustments review was provided to audit and finance committee last month on January twelfth. This is our general fund revenue, so as, I mean, we presented the, these slides before too, so our revenue is mainly from property taxes, sales tax, then intergovernmental activities, then we have franchise fee, other revenue like nine percent, but major parts are sales tax, property tax, and intergovernmental. This is the history for general fund revenue, so we ended our fiscal year thirteen, fourteen with twelve million dollar, then we are projecting to collect twelve, I mean, one, eleven point two million for this current fiscal year. This is from the original budget. For our expenditures, as you can see, our main expenditures are police department and fire, then the others are basically average from seven to eight percent of expenditures. Our expenditure history for general fund is we ended our fiscal year thirteen, fourteen with eleven point six million, then we are projecting to end our fiscal year fourteen fifteen with eleven point two million as expenditures. This is our general fund operating position, so this is very crucial. As you can see, for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, we have a surplus of two hundred thirty-two thousand dollar, but for fourteen, fifteen, we only have a surplus of eleven thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollar as, according to the budget. As of January twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, for general fund, we, so far, we collected thirty-one point five percent of our projected revenue, and our expenditures are forty-five point three percent incurred so far. So, so far, we have a deficit or shortfall of one point five million. This is revenue from different sources, so as you can see, property taxes about two point two, sales tax are two million, then intergovernmental is two point seven, then admin fees are one point nine, so altogether, our revenue projections are eleven point one. Then our, so far, we collected thirty-two percent of our projected revenue, which is three point five million. For expenditures, so far, we have forty-five percent expenditures incurred from our budget, from our original budget.
Excuse me, could you just go back to that last card? I just wanted to take a quick look at that.
This one?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. For water enterprise fund, our budget, budgeted revenue is three point two, so so far, we collected one point eight, then expenditures are budgeted three million, so so far, we incurred one point two million. We do have a surplus of about six hundred thousand for this water enterprise fund. For sewer enterprise fund, we budgeted revenue is eleven point one, then so far, we collected six point four. Expenditures are ten point, ten million, but then so far, we incurred two point one, so we do have a surplus of four point three million as of January twenty-eighth, but we do have to minus out that two million bond payment we made back in October. For sanitation, our projected revenue is three point five, so far, we collected two million. Expenditures are two point eight, so far, we incurred one point one million. We do have a surplus of nine hundred thousand dollar for that fund. For major H, that's that point five percent sales tax that was effective in two thousand thirteen, this money is specifically for public safety. So according to fourteen, fifteen, a fiscal year's revenue projections, we projected one point three million, so so far, we collected seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollar for that fund.
Explain it if you can, Mr. Rivera. Thank you. On that, where are we as far as the projection? I mean, at this time of year, is that on schedule for the one point three million?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, and what percentage of the year are we in right now as far as, for the revenue?
We have some adjustments coming for this fund too, so we are, I mean, we projected one point three, so so far, we are like fifty percent right there, but then according to our new projections, we have some increase in that, so that's coming up, yeah.
Thank you.
These are some proposed budget adjustments for general fund, so we have increase of twenty-five thousand in property taxes, sales taxes, two point, I mean, sorry, two hundred seventy-two license and permits, twelve hundred five, twelve thousand five hundred. Intergovernmental, we are increasing eighty-four thousand, and miscellaneous revenue, we're increasing forty-six hundred. Then charges for services, there is some decrease because we are not collecting as much in impound fees and false alarms fees and stuff, so those are, all the details are provided in the package. For, for the expenditure side, for the fire, we, we are requesting more money for CalFire's agreement because according to last year's contract, we budgeted only one point eight million for that contract, but the original expense was two million, so we are making that adjustment for this current fiscal year. Then finance is requesting fifty thousand for professional services, that is for, to pay for the auditors and our CPAs, and we do have a temp, temp hired part-time to basically cover our front window and stuff, so professional services is used for all those kind of services. Community development is requesting twenty-five hundred for plan check fees, there was not any money budgeted for it, so we are making that adjustment as well. For human resources and city clerk, we are lowering that expense by fifteen hundred dollar for travel, conference, and meetings. Then for community services, there are four program, sports program, we are lowering that fees by six thousand dollar for that, so altogether, we are requesting two hundred forty-four thousand for, to make those adjustments on expenditure side. So after these adjustments, our revenue is grown by three hundred and fifty-six thousand, so if we do get approval on these adjustments, then our new revenue would be eleven point five for the general fund, then the expenditures will be one point three, then we still have capital projects for ninety-eight hundred, then we still have a surplus of one hundred twenty-four thousand dollar for general fund. Any questions? For general fund, financial position as of last fiscal year, we do have a negative cash balance of three point one million, then our fund balance is four point four million negative. Things are improving, but they're not there yet, so it will take some time to bring this balance up. These are the adjustments for other funds. For major H, we are expecting two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar increase. Then for the expenditure side, we are requesting eighty-seven thousand dollar adjustment. That is, seven thousand is for the lease payment for the truck, because our original budget had only eighty thousand as a lease payment, but the payment is eighty-seven thou, eighty-seven thousand, so we are making that adjustment, and a fire department is requesting that eighty thousand for the equipment for new truck, so that is included in there.
Laquinda?
If I might, on the measure H funds, your projected revenue of the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand is, is that reflected also? We've had a dramatic drop in gasoline prices.
Right.
Does this number reflect that, or is this prior?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
They provided these numbers last quarter from Muni Services, so they included all that stuff in there. Then for gas tax, street improvement, we are increasing revenue by fifteen hundred. Park and recreation, we are increasing that revenue by fifty-nine thousand, then they are lowering their expense for sixty-five thousand, so one capital project, which they're not planning to work this year. Then for community redevelopment property trust, we are increasing ten thousand there. Assessment districts, they are lowering thirteen thousand on expense side. Then sewer enterprise, they are requesting some funds for CIP projects and some items they need to buy, so that total up to three thirty-one. Then building is requesting ten thousand dollar for three items. Then employee benefits, we are decreasing that unemployment insurance and dental insurance by thirty-four thousand dollar. Then risk management, we are lowering that by two thousand dollar, and information technology, we are requesting twenty-eight thousand more because we just had our accounting software upgrade done, so we do need extra money to buy that annual license for that. Then we do have two of the interfund transfers. First one is from sewer fund, professional services to capital improvement project fund, that money is for West Used Associates to meet our regulatory requirements. Then the second one is from redevelopment obligation retirement fund to successor agency debt services fund to cover our bond payments for the year. Recommended action, we would like you to adopt this amendment, so we will be amending our budget going forward for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, then that is pretty much it. I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
I'm sure you would. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, so is this an action item? Okay. So we'll entertain a motion then if there are no further comments?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Protem Bergman and Mr. Vineyard. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, with some of these changes in the amounts to the budget, one was the eighty thousand dollars requested by fire, so are we approving that at this time? That, that we're gonna go ahead and accept the eighty thousand dollars without, I thought we were gonna see a list of what they actually needed for the items prior to that.
I think the list was emailed to all the council members, and Mark is available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, but you know, the general public should know what's, what the items are too, and my email was down during this time, so I did not receive it, so I, I think that if we're gonna go ahead with something, it needs to be open and honest and let the people see what we're budgeting eighty thousand more for. I mean, there was questions and, and I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it on the agenda for what the items are that we're purchasing.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I did email you, you the packet a week ago, and then also put a hard copy in the individuals I wasn't able to meet face to face here at the city hall's mailbox, so there is a hard copy in each person's box that I did not meet face to face and went to.
Well, that's, apparently there was some mistake somewhere because I don't see anything in my drawer, and one other thing too is why is this not on the, that was one of the requests, is that it come back to the council with itemized, so we can see exactly where this money is going?
Yeah, we can have that, Joe.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I, you possibly didn't get a copy, I don't know why.
Okay, so, but, but anyway, but I mean, why, why would, why would it only be sent to the council, not in our packets for everybody in the public to see?
My direction, I believe, was to give the council members a packet of an itemized list and prioritize, that was my direction.
Because, you know, I, I had, I had some questions, I don't have that with me, I'm sorry, so, and I'm sure some others, because I talked with some others in the community that had some concerns too about where some of the items were that were supposed to be on the existing truck, and now we're gonna restock the, the new truck with all these new items, so, oh, thank you very much.
If you'd like a couple of minutes to go over that, Joe, I'd be more than happy to allow you to, to do that, if you, I, I know that's, they're kinda closing the door after the cows got out, but.
But, you know, I, I kind of, like I said, I like the open, transparent councils, and with all the information, I mean, when you stop and look at the, the budget, you wonder why the city's where it is right now? Well, you just have to take a look at the past, from the last report, look, look at what happened in two thousand and six, why did it start losing money? I mean, it's all there in the budget, it explains it to everybody, even though some people don't want to admit it, it shows exactly where the money has gone, why it's at a deficit. And so, you know, this last minute stuff where, I don't know, did the press get a copy of this too? Of this, did, I, I'm just curious, you, you have, you got this, but, okay, so the press apparently didn't get a copy either, so how can we be open and transparent to the people we're supposed to be representing if it's not all out there? So, anyway, so, at this last minute, no, I'm, I'm not for passing this amendment tonight, I mean, I'll give it a little more time, making sure it's on, it's included in the packet, so everybody in the city of Atwater can read it.
Last council meeting, I was able to provide a itemized list at that point to show a general picture about what the items were, and then by direction from the council, I was asked to bring back this to you and provide this information to yourselves. So to provide that in the mid-year budget was the best appropriate way with all the new budgets, and giving you the opportunity to see all the items and the price list.
Yeah, I thought you were going to identify the most important objects too. One other thing, I see that right here, right now, but, you know, I'd like a copy given to the newspaper, and I'd like everybody in the community to be able to read where the money is going, because I think that's the most important thing. I also talked to some firemen to get another opinion, and they were asking me, well, where's your existing equipment that was on the truck? They said there were some suits that were on, that were provided before, some respirators or something, and they said, why do you have to purchase some new ones for the new truck and weren't they on the old one? So I, I'd like at least that answer tonight.
To, to reference that, with this new list, we're not outfitting the complete truck with the SCBA's, which is the breathing apparatus that you're referring to, we're only asking for two more so that we can keep the reserve line piece of equipment ready for service if there's a significant incident within the city. When those two resources are available or at an incident, we can still have the reserve engine to be available for additional incidents, and the city can, with their fire department, they can provide for additional incidents that would come in the future.
And like the Sony camera, we don't have an existing one right now, we need to go out and purchase a new one?
Negative, that's not on the list, sir.
Okay, well, that's, that was some of the things that were brought up in the past, so, okay, thank you.
Some of the items that I was curious on, Mark, is pertains a lot to the medical supplies, in particular, like you have backboards, where are we? The backboards, resuscitator, Ambu bag, these type of things like. The backboards, resuscitator, Ambu bag, these type of things like that. I, I know those are important, basic life support type items, but realistically, how often does the Fire Department actually use those things? In particular, like, like, for example, a backboard?
Majority of our incidents are medical aids that we do go to. I probably estimate somewhere in the seventy-five to eighty percent of our calls is medical aids, where those, those type of items are used constantly in the city of Atwater.
Okay, well, for example, you know, in my other life at Riggs, backboards was a, was a hot ticket item, because you put somebody on it, they are on a helicopter, and next thing you know, you've lost your backboard. So, I mean, are you gonna be coming back to us for replacement backboards?
Negative, sir. We would not be doing that. We'll be able to have a backboard and work with Riggs in acquiring either our backboard back or a similar type of backboard from our local medical provider.
And I also noted in here that you had somewhere buried in here, and I apologize for not having it dog-eared, but you had wildland type hoses and certain gear. Why would you put something like that on a unit like this?
Just to reference a few incidents that we did have in the city last year, over by Osborne Park, where we're working off the canal, there was no access. This type of apparatus, I don't necessarily want to drive it back into that area, we can actually do a progressive hose lay, and that would be a better way to actually handle vegetation fires such as that. So to, to mitigate those type of incidents, having that hose to do a progressive hose lay, which would basically be laying the hose out to the fire, would provide us the means necessary to put that fire out.
Well, yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just...
And just, just to reference that, there is no wildland hose on that. We do have wildland hose at the station. It's the packs required to carry the wildland pack, the hose. So there is no wildland hose. We do have some at the station. We have used and gonna use that for the fill on that truck if necessary.
Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll hold my comments for Pro Tim Bergman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add on to that. We have several areas in this city, for instance, off Sycamore, where we have many acres of grass, what we call wildland. These engines that we have are extremely heavy. They don't go off-road. If they hit that sand out there, they'd sink immediately. So, so having items like, the chief is talking about this, these packs, we need this to access a lot of these areas that are several hundred feet off the roadway, that the hose that we typically have on the engines are very heavy. It's just a different, different makeup of hose, and so what he's asking for is, you know, is vital in protecting a lot of our businesses. We have businesses off Sycamore that this grass butt's up to, so it's, so what they're asking for is very minor in the grand scheme of what could be asked for in this, for this truck. And to address some issues earlier, you know, people are talking about the, the old ladder truck. That's been out of service for two years.
Oh, I'm not even referring to that.
Well, no, but it was addressed earlier, so I'm just saying, fire equipment has a life. It all, it has a shelf life, and it's only good for so long. When you have, you're talking about a forty-year-old piece of equipment that had equipment on it, most of that has reached its shelf life, and it's no longer usable.
Right. Well, I, I see we're still looking at brooms, you know, push brooms and things like that. I mean, I mean, I, I mean...
Would you like me to elaborate on that?
Yeah, would you please?
Typical structure fire, we do mop up, we do clean up, we do, we do clean up the structures much as possible. Vehicle accidents, glass in the road, to, to have these, I know it seems a push broom, I guess last council was a hammer, these, these are, these are items that we do use in the fire service. We do need to clean off the roads. We do need to clean the structures to provide the opportunity for the, the property owners to go back there and get their houses or their, their businesses or residents back in order promptly.
Well, don't get me wrong. We, we understand, you know, that this, but I, I think I speak for, at least I know I do for Councilmember Rivera, you know, we're, we're looking at dollars and cents here. And, you know, we just had a not-too-flattering report, you know, on our financial condition. So, you know, wherever we can kind of pinch a few pennies, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
And I agree one hundred and ten percent. That's why I've gone through this process, a long, lengthy process, to provide the city with a vital piece of equipment that is very cost-efficient, and the way of doing it, like I said before, if we would've gone through the company and had it purchased through the lease, it would've probably estimated another forty thousand. So in, in the grand scheme of things, this is, this is what I'm trying to do for the city, to provide them with a viable piece of equipment to respond to incidents within the city.
So, so what you're saying in essence is, every item that we have in your breakout here, every single one is one that you've got to have?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vineyard?
Knowing both sides of the argument here, I believe we have a one point four eight million-dollar Measure H estimate, correct? City manager?
Yes.
And we have a estimated surplus of four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars projected?
Correct.
And that's not counting if we take eighty thousand dollars from that surplus, and that's where these funds are gonna be coming from, correct?
Correct. My feeling is, and this would be no matter what we're looking at, public safety-wise, is you have to outfit public safety. You can't, you can't take an old piece of equipment and put it on a new piece of equipment. You don't take old tires and put them on a brand-new car. You don't do that. So you gotta make sure that your frontline engines, frontline whatever cars, whether they're police cars or engines, have all the equipment they need, and it needs to be new equipment. You need to make sure that everything's maintained to the fullest extent. We have the dollars, and I'm not a, I'm not a firm believer in spending every single dollar. Trust me, I'm, I'm a firm believer that you have to have a cushion, because you have things that happen. But at the same token, I don't believe that you need to nitpick every little thing when there are some, when you have some dollars that we have. So don't take used equipment and put it on something brand-new. Let's make sure that this city is protected with the proper equipment for the proper things we have. I'm not the expert. We have an expert here that knows what he needs, and so that's what we should be guiding ourselves by. We shouldn't be guiding ourselves by past practices or what jobs we had before, because times have changed. But we need to listen to the experts, and we do have the dollars to cover that and still have the surplus and still protect our city in both emergencies and both budgetary-wise. That's how my feeling is on it.
Mr. Rivera?
Well, thank you. I, I agree with Mr. Vineyard that you need to stock the truck with new equipment, as far as the hoses, the clamps, all of that should be brand-new, and I have no problem with that. But like I said, I'd like to know, and I don't know why, we're going to the contracted individuals to ask them what they, what we have. Our city managers should also be providing us with what we have with already before, because as far as I know, a pipe wrench doesn't go out of style. You can use one from nineteen forty, and it still works. The hacksaws, the metal pliers, the ratchet sets, allen wrenches, utility knife, pipe wrenches, rubber mallet, wire cutters, don't you already have those right in the fire station and that were on the other truck? I mean, that's, that's my point, is, is, yeah, all the money's there, and all the money's there from who? It's from the people, the taxpayers. So the, the job of the council is to say, hey, yeah, the money's there, we can go ahead and spend it, we can buy all-new, all-new wrenches, all-new, but do we really need all that? I agree, the hoses, the clamps, the things that are gonna be safety and really necessary on a truck that was never gone out to bid to begin with, which I don't know why. But I, I mean, there's still, there's still savings that you can do. It's easy to go ahead and say, hey, the money's there, hey, taxpayers, thank you. We passed this, and we're gonna spend it all for brand-new things, because we want a new set of pliers, the old ones we don't like. So there's a lot of things here that you can cut, but we can go ahead and spend it. Anyway, I just, I, I, I'm not against the safety equipment. You're not gonna need to do hoses on it, you're not gonna use the old hoses and the, maybe the old clamps, but there's, there's still items, you've taken some off, and I appreciate that. But like I said, I'm not here to, to satisfy just the people that want this, I'm here to satisfy the people that elect me to oversee their funds, making sure that they are. So there, there's equipment on here that I see as necessary, there's other stuff that I, I'd like to know personally where some of this equipment is. I mean, do we have, and this is a question to the city manager, don't you have an inventory list that was, that they kept? My understanding is that every department used to have one. So, you know, before you're asking us, I'd like to see, what do we have? And if we had something before, where did it go? I mean, there was a question before I got on, I think there was something on the grand jury report, saying that items were missing and had to be brought back to the city of Atwater. So I want to make sure that everything's on the up and up, and, and we're doing our very best to save every dollar we can. That's, that's it. And, and I appreciate that you have taken some off.
Well...
Eighty thousand more for a fire truck that cost that much, that didn't go out to bid, I, I just think, we gotta be careful.
Well, I, you know, I, this is kind of the proverbial rock and a hard place. I'm not gonna question whether or not the fire guys are, or are not experts, they are. And they do, I mean, Herculean work in this city and everywhere else that they, that they operate. And I agree with you that, you know, we are the custodians of the dollars that we have in the city, and we have precious few. I, I, I kind of feel a little painted into a corner, just a little, because I know that, you know, we've got a big piece of equipment out there that we've got to put into service, but far be it from me to question their honesty on this, or whether or not, you know, the equipment that they're saying that they need is needed. I'm not an expert in that, no more than if somebody came over to my office and told me on my equipment, you know, you don't need this. I know what I need, and I know that they know what they need. You know, we're not here to relive the battles of, of purchasing and things along like that. I agree with you one hundred percent, you know, we've got to look out for the dollars. And like I say, I'm, I, I think we're kind of painted into a corner here just a little bit, but we've got to get this thing in service. We've got it now, we've got to get it in service. That's what the citizens expect us to do. So the only thing I would ask, Chief, what, what other things in the future are we looking at as far as any other further equipment purchases, things along those lines? What, what purchases can, can we look for, say, in the next six months or even beyond?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I wanted to just step up here. I first want to commend Chief Pimentel for the work he's done with respect to this truck. You have a million-dollar truck that you paid substantially less for because of the work that Chief Pimentel put into that. With respect to that, the equipment that, when we first were talking about, and City Manager Pietro can attest to, we said there would be equipment that would need to come with this truck. The truck that you had previously was under-equipped for what we were looking at for today's technologies, and just as Councilmember Bergman mentioned, things do change. I've sat here now for a couple of hours and heard how we need to move to laser fiche, because that's the new thing, and we're moving into the twenty-first century, and we need to look at pipeline safety, the same exact items that your Fire Department has been dealing with in pipeline safety for years and years and years, yet now it's a safety item. The technology that the Fire Department is involved with every single day increases and changes. When you ask, are we gonna be asking for more things, there's always times when the Fire Department is gonna need equipment, just like the Police Department or Public Works. When you asked us what we needed to outfit this, this truck, we could've easily put in a bid for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars' worth of equipment to, to outfit this vehicle. We didn't. When, when Chief Pimentel said, and what are we gonna outfit it with? They said, we're gonna do the best we can fiscally for this city. I, I think it's a disingenuous argument to say that we're contracts, we are a cooperative fire protection agreement, we work collectively with your folks in this city, and we do understand the fiscal responsibilities. And Chief Pietro can tell you that I have personally put at great personal risk to my job, this city at the forefront of fiscal responsibility by not requiring the city to pay their bills, so that we, we could allow you to hang on to interest monies. We've far exceeded saving even this eighty thousand dollars we're asking for, for the truck. So I wasn't trying to get into Chief Pimentel's business, I wanted to make sure you understand that I, the only reason I'm up here is because I want to make sure that we should always be asked. I, and I feel that's our responsibilities to answer your questions, but it's hard to be attacked, and we constantly are. I know we got new police vehicles in, in the city, and we work very well with our police partners, we love what, what they bring. You know, a lot of the calls that Lieutenant Joseph mentioned today, that, that occurred this last month, our firefighters responded to as well. So I just want to make sure that we're not being relegated to a contract anymore, we're a cooperative agreement, we work with you every single day to be fiscally responsible. We brought you a very minimal list of the stuff that needed to be on that truck. It's not an issue of taking old stuff off of the new, I mean, yeah, we're gonna do some of that, but there still is another fire engine in this city, and you want that to respond, correct? This is not a replacement fire engine, this is a truck for your city. We're still keeping Engine Forty-One in service as a reserve. Are we gonna stop at the fire station, unload everything off the truck, put it on the fire engine so it can respond? There is a responsibility for us to do that, and I really appreciate your comment about you trust us as the experts to make those decisions. That's what we're here for. That's what we do every single day. I've always answered your questions forthright, I've always provided transparency to this city, every single time I've been asked a question. We will continue to do so. That's our responsibility, and that's our customer service to you. So I promise that I'm telling you the truth, when this is a minimal amount of equipment for that truck to be able to operate and still be able to maintain good equipment on all the rest of the engines that you have. Did you see the size of Ferrari Ranch? If you don't think we're gonna be asking for more equipment, we're probably gonna have to have some other discussions. That is going to be a tremendous, tremendous responsibility for your Fire Department, and there are gonna have to be issues that we're gonna discuss. But if you mean, are we gonna ask you right now for anything else for that truck? Absolutely not. This is what we need to get the truck up and operational and meet your needs, meet the needs of all the people within this city. So that's all that eighty thousand dollars has to do with, is making this truck as minimally operational as it can be, so that we can remain fiscally responsible to the City Council and to the people that live here in the city, because we believe it. We're citizens here too, we live it, we love this city, we want to make sure we're making good decisions for it.
Take a breath.
Thank you.
Take a breath.
Didn't turn on my five minutes, no.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from the council? I, I don't want to leave you folks with the wrong impression. We're just being real frugal these days, you know that. So if you say that, Nancy, I'm gonna trust you. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Rivera?
I know we need to get it in going. I know we need it. And I heard two things, though. I heard that, one was antiquated, but we're using it as a reserve. That wasn't mentioned before, so since that's being used as a reserve, and you can't take anything off of it, and this is the bare basics, I will go along with this agenda item.
And vote yes.
So, yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Audit and Finance Committee reorganization.
During our last Audit and Finance meeting, we were suggested that we bring one additional person, a public representative, who has some finance background, to join two council members and one treasurer for the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. So if council will approve this resolution, then we will start that process. So, if council will approve this resolution, then we will start that process to bring that person in.
Comments from the council, Mr. Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think this would be a good idea. You know, we talk about transparency. We talk about public input. I think this would be a great opportunity to have an individual that has financial background to be on this committee, to have the input. So, we do have the public helping out. My only question would be typically when we have committees, we have interviews. We have application period, we have interviews. Is this the policy, the direction we should take? Or is this something maybe we have the city manager make an appointment to? That would be my question. But typically with committees, we have had interviews and so that would be my question.
Mr. Vineyard?
I'm also totally in agreement with Mr. Bergman. And adding this person to the committee helps with the transparency and helps with the public being involved. So, and I have the same question as he.
Well, I guess I'll be the odd man out. I don't, I don't see the need and I'll tell you why. I heard us talk about transparency and openness and all that. This is a public meeting. The Audit and Finance Committee has always been a public meeting. And anyone that wishes to come to this meeting and make comment or make suggestions or whatever, you can do that. Now, insofar as financial background, we have a representative from the city in the finance department. We have the treasurer who is also present. City manager, you're there as well, are you not? So, we have people that have the financial wherewithal already there. So, I'm kind of looking at this, you know, I think the openness and transparency is kind of a, for lack of a better term, a weak argument. It's open. It's transparent. It's right there. And anybody that wants to attend and make comments or suggestions, they can do so. I just, I just have that feeling like, you know, this is a solution, you know, looking for the problem. And I don't see a problem there at this point. We have Mr. Zenoni also, who is now working with us. If we, you know, we've got financial experts within the city. Luquinda is very capable and she's part of this. So, I'm sorry, but I can't support this at this time. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will have to concur with our mayor. I think that transparency isn't even an issue here. We have an elected official, the treasurer, and he's represented by the people to say that now we need to override the public's person and we need to put somebody else on there. I think you're just kind of, it's kind of redundant. You have a person who's elected treasurer by the public. He sits on it. He's there all the time. We have a couple of council members and we have, it's open, as Mr. Mayor Price has stated, that people can come all the time. It's an open process. So, I don't see any need to just say now we need to increase the committee members by somebody that we deem is more important than the ones that the residents have elected. I think he's the one that's overseeing the treasurer, the treasury report. He reports every day to the council, not every meeting to the council. And I think that it's just a type of overkill. And as you said, it's open to the public. Anyone can come down and in fact, anyone can come down and ask for any of the budgets to find out specifically where we're losing money. It's all, it's all in the budgets. So, anyway, so I'll concur with you.
Pro Tim Bergman?
Thank you. The main issue here is you're very right. Anybody can come to the Audit and Finance. Anybody can speak their opinion. The last couple of agenda items we've had, we've had a council member talking about how the citizens need to have a voice. The citizens need to be heard. All we're, the idea behind this when it was brought forward is to give the citizens a voice. So, you know, we're not trying to supersede. We do have some very intelligent individuals. Ms. Deall is extremely intelligent and I don't know many people that have, you know, any more finance, you know, knowledge than she does. We do have Mr. Zenoni that is coming back and helping us. We do have a city treasurer who's very knowledgeable. All we're, you know, bringing forward with this is just to give a citizen a voice. I mean, I've heard it so many times on so many issues tonight, citizens need a voice. This is all we're doing. Yes, they elected the treasurer. I agree. But, but other than an elected official, other than them giving their opinion, what say so? Or do they have any say so? They don't. This is just giving the citizens an option to sit up there and have some say so so the citizens can feel that they actually have a voice and what they say is actually important. That's basically what we were getting at when we brought, when it was brought forward to us and why we're bringing it tonight is, you know, so the citizens can feel that they actually do have a voice in the finances of the city. That's all. Plain and simple.
Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, just to tag on to Councilman Bergman, this was actually made, a request made from the citizens. This was not something thought up by him and I. This was a request at one of the finance meetings by the citizens so they could have that voice. Simple as that.
Well, I appreciate all the comments. I really do. But again, I still, I mean, tonight, we've had a presentation of our financial condition. Any one of the folks that are in the audience tonight can come to the podium at the conclusion of the report and give a comment, give suggestions, any kind of input. The same thing can be done at the Audit and Finance Committee meetings. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the Audit and Finance Committee's meetings are more where the council members that are there are gathering information. Is that not the way it normally works? That it's a gathering of the information coming from the financial staff, correct?
Usually, yes. We provide information to Audit and Finance Committee first. Once they feel comfortable with that, then we bring it to city council.
Okay. So, my point being is that it's not a, how should I say, where you would make voting decisions to, on expenditures and what have you. It's a fact gathering. You bring the information. Audit and Finance Committee members, being the two city council people, are fact gatherers and then it's forwarded in that respect. So, so to have a member from the community added to that, it doesn't, to me, show a benefit. And again, you know, and yes, we talked about the transparency and the openness and all that sort of thing. But it's there. That transparency and that openness is there. And anybody from the community can make that comment anytime they want during the course of that meeting. So, those are my comments. Any further comments? I'll entertain a motion. Now, before we do that, I see that Mr. Raymond has joined us. So, it'll be appropriate for, to allow him to, okay. Just want to make sure here because we've gone through a whole lot of information and things here. Okay, very good. In any case, Councilmember Raymond, would you like to make any comments before we entertain a motion?
You know, I don't know what's been discussed. That's just showing up. So, it's not appropriate at this time.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion.
It's kind of an effort and futility, but I'll make the motion that we add a citizen at large from the public to the Audit and Finance, just to give the public a little more say so in what is done. Although a lot of it is informational, we do discuss and make decisions on what comes to council. So, I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call for the question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
No.
Rivera?
No.
Price?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, everybody.
Amending the building permit fee schedule for a three-month stimulus for residential building permit fees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mark Cretta, chief building official. At our last meeting, it was requested by council to provide an amended building permit fee schedule showing 5% and 10% temporary reduction for three months. The resolution provides for a three-month stimulus for all residential building permits issued to homeowners who live within the city limits and who pay directly for their own building permits. That is the only option that ensures the homeowner actually receives the benefit of the potential temporary stimulus. Reason why I added this language is in previous reductions, we had customers come to the counter stating they were looking for their refund. It was never transferred from the contractor to the actual homeowner. So, that language is added in there. A contractor may still prepare the application for the building permit, but in order to receive the temporary stimulus, the homeowner must pay for the permit directly. So, we can ensure that that homeowner is actually getting the stimulus meant. So, one of the things we wanted to point out as we were going through this scenario, we found out that with Springbook, our computer program, we just can't just take 5% and 10% off. We have to manually override everything on it. We just, for auditing and everything else, it would seem, it would make sense to be able to create a permit, strike off 5% or 10% and then have the customer pay. But we can't track it that way and our numbers won't line up. So, we have to go in and add some labor and staff time and stuff like that in order to do that. We've been finding out that in order to do it, it's going to add about five, 10 minutes per permit, depending on the type of permit. It could be even more. So, there's going to be some staff time loss on that also. So, I just wanted to make you cognizant of that particular fact. But we did provide you a number of pages that show just nothing but residential permit fees. So, I went ahead and took all the permit fees that are only residential fees and give them to you. Whether it's a new house construction, whether it's a water heater replacement, it didn't make a difference. They were all being listed. And I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Vineyard?
First of all, thank you for taking your time and your busy schedule to do this for us. So, in your estimation, how much is, if you, top of your head, it would be the dollar figure in additional lost wages for having to do those additional calculations?
Well, that's a great question, councilman. Right now, I would, it would be safe to say that the 5%, 10% would actually be more of a 8% to 12% by the time labor's done. It could even, again, if we have somebody coming in for a solar permit and then wanting to also change out their electric panel, that also wanted to change out something else and which happens a lot, we're looking at different line items that we've got to override, do the calculations. It doesn't sound like much, but when you're having to go in, the Springbook system isn't something you just override. You have to go to a link and that link takes you to another link. And by the time you get it all filled out, now, I'm no computer wizard. I admit that, plain and simple. But it was taking me an average of 25 minutes to process on a test sample of a solar permit with electric panel change on, as compared to 10 minutes if I were to do it otherwise. So, Stephanie, who is our permit tech, she would be faster, but we are going to lose. It's just as simple as that.
So, and what would be a 10% savings to the homeowner ends up being about a 15% loss of revenue to the city?
Possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Oh, Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank you for your efforts you put into it and then to point out the potential problems that you've had in the past when developers may not have given you the exact information you need in writing that in. I think that this is a good thing for the residents. In fact, we have on it tonight to give, once again, extend the price, the cuts to some of the developers that come out to tens of thousands of dollars or potentially even hundreds of thousands of dollars. And this is a savings to the citizens of, they might save $10. They might save $2 on some of these. I saw $2, $5. But it might, again, once again, stimulate people to come down and actually spend the money, buy the permits, which brings in money to the city too that otherwise wouldn't have come in. The other deal is that you're going to spur the economy, local economy, because when we give the cuts to the developers for six months and then another six months and another six months, a lot of them have their contractors from outside the county that come here and build. None of that tax revenue comes right back in, whereas you're going to put the people, people, if you're a homeowner, you want to re-roof, you want to do a solar, you want to do something. In a lot of cases, they'll hire a local contractor. So, you're going to put money back into the system too. So, many times over when you stop and look at it. So, I think this is a, and it's not a long-term thing. This is a trial, three-month basis where we've given, or previous councils in the past have given, six months and then another six months and another six months and potentially even more coming up to the developers. And I think that the residents deserve their opportunity to go ahead and reap some of the benefits that the outside individuals are doing and at the same time stimulate the local economy.
Any other comments? Well, I can only, from my own limited knowledge on this, the Blue Mountain folks have been coming in here and they're the ones that are pulling the permits, majority of the permits these days, correct?
Yes, residential new house.
Right.
Mayor, just to make sure that we're not confusing this item with the next item. This is only for owner builder or owner paid permits. It would not apply for developer.
I understand. I understand. But my correlation between the two, and yes, I'm probably skipping a little bit into that. The point being is, is that, you know, I agree that, you know, wherever we can cut corners, you know, for residents and that, I'm all for it. Don't, you know, I don't think there's anybody sitting on this dais that wouldn't be for that. But as you've, as you've stated, it'll cost us money to save money. Is that not what you're saying?
It will. Well, in effect, number one, my hours and Stephanie's hours are a direct reflect of your permit fees. I mean, at 100%, that's what it takes to run the building division in all its capacity. You reduce from there, naturally, you're already, the city's already, the general fund's already going to be incurring a loss.
Right.
On top of that, you're going to have the extra staff time in order to process these permits. So, again, I'm speculating that, you know, that the total loss of anywhere from 8% to 12% and that was just on the loose calculation of the time I had remaining in order to get this done. And it all is going to be on, dependent on the projects that are filed or applications isn't filed. Because it could take, you know, if we have four or five items on a permit, it's going to take longer. So.
Well, as I recall at the last meeting when we were discussing this, it was your contention that the monies that are received in the way of permits, you know, for the home projects and what have you, are basically a wash. It just, it's, it's just an even deal there. It's paying for that service and those employee hours and what have you in order to issue that permit. Is that not correct?
Absolutely. We were the first one in our area to do that. Matter of fact, Merced has now followed suit. Newman has now followed suit. Modesto has now followed suit. We were the standard bearer doing that in 2007. This is through litigation and there's a whole wall of. This is through litigation, and there's a whole wall of the story behind it, but we were the first ones to, to get it and take care of it, that we are legal. So, code-wise, the way the law is written, building division shouldn't take in more than what it, it takes to do the services. Maybe a little bit more just ahead, because you never know when you're going to have extra services needed and stuff like that. But it should never profit, heavily profit from building fees. And so, that's what we have here.
So, I will entertain a motion, or what direction would the council like to go on this?
I move to table this issue indefinitely.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussions? Call for the question.
I have my line on, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, you know, when I hear that there's going to be a loss of revenue, now, the employees are working under a contract. When they're doing the work, it may be a little more work for them, but it's not going to be that much more costly, because you're not going to be spending overtime. I can't, I don't see this benefit to the actual residents as costing anymore to the city at all. There's going to be a potential more money coming in. Now, I agree, it may make a little more work for you. I don't see it putting overtime for you, because I don't see it increasing that much. I do see it though, where we're spending some of the money, or receiving some of the money that normally wouldn't have come in. Some people, if we get three more, four more people that are going to do a roof, that's not going to make you have overtime. So, unless your employees are actually making overtime, that's not really a completely honest look at this, because the, the whole point is, is that I don't see it causing overtime. That's why we only ask for a three-month period.
Right.
But I mean, if we don't do anything for the residents, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's up to this. We can table it indefinitely.
Councilmember, just, just so you know, Mr. Pareda doesn't get paid overtime. And when he gets called out at two in the morning and three in the morning on the weekends, so look at fire damage or buildings that aren't crashed in, he doesn't get paid overtime. He doesn't get any call-out time for that either. We will tell you this, though, when he can't do the work that needs to be done during the day because he's too busy doing permits, we have to call the outside firm to come in. They charge a set dollar cost to come do work for us. You don't recover any of that cost. We haven't raised the fees to cover that cost. So, so there technically is a cost. If he's too busy to do the permits, they still have to get, the inspection still has to be done. I just want to remind the council, you don't have to charge anything for permit issuance. You don't have to charge any fees you want to. We're set to cover, to cover the cost only. You may be right. Maybe there's going to be a nice influx of new people who'll come in, and if that's the case, that would be fantastic. We don't know to answer that. So, whatever it is you want to do tonight, please take your action, vote your conscience, and we'll adopt to whatever you want to do with, with this program.
Well, and I thank you very much for that input, because a, as you stated, and I like your optimism, where you're saying it may cost so much, we're going to have to hire somebody else, if that many more residents would actually come in to save a little bit. But I don't think it's going to go that far. I think that it may stimulate a few more people, get a few more local contractors' jobs, pumping a little more money into the city.
Well, that's the, part of the thing also, Mr. Rivero, it won't be a contractor. These are owner-builders.
Well, I'm talking about the owner, owner-builders, but they'll hire a contractor to put in-
No. These are owner-builders doing the work.
So, that's how it's written up? Okay, thank you. Call for the question. I wouldn't want that anyway.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Rivero?
Table this with owner, owner-directors. I'll, I'll go for that.
So, yes?
The way that it's worded, that.
Is that a yes, Joe?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Temporary fee reduction to development impact fees.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for your consideration of this item tonight. This is somewhat different from the last item. This is not regarding building permit fees. This is regarding your impact fees. I was asked to provide an item for your consideration, and so it's here for your consideration tonight. What we were asked to do was provide something that was similar to what we had previously, which provided for a discount of impact fees. As you know, there were a couple of fees that we have already established, no longer have a nexus to be charged. There were conditions of approval, and we've got those situations that have now expired. So, the only thing that was remaining to be similar to the old program that you did provide was for a direct discount, and that direct discount previously was $3,000. And so, this draft ordinance for your consideration tonight would establish a temporary $3,000 discount, and it would be leveraged against all your AB-1600 fees that you collect. Be more than happy to answer any questions you have. This is intended to, if you want to take action on it, this, tonight is not something that you can do, but you can give us direction to bring it back. We could do the, the public notice, do the hearing, and bring it back in a, in a form that's been approved by the city attorney and is ready for your action. This night is a draft for your input, for discussion, and I would also stress, if you don't want to do it, give us direction that you don't want to do it tonight, so we don't have to bring it back and, and waste any more time on this. If you're done with the program, let's be clear about it and move forward. If you want to do it, then let's be clear about that, and we'll take, take action. So, we're here to answer your questions that you might have.
Mr. Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this, the way it's drafted, it's for a $3,000 cut for each unit for, for the developers. Is that correct?
It's crafted where it's a maximum, like it was before, of 30 units per developer.
30 units at 3,000 each?
Yes.
Okay, so 90,000 now. I heard, just heard, that there's a problem punching it in with the discount. Is there the similar problem for the developers, or is that only-
No, we do this differently. This is, this is on what's called a scheduled fee. It's actually a spreadsheet. What Mark does for building permit fees is built into it, the financial system, and so you're correct, he has to manually enter each value for the type of permit. This is a spreadsheet. We can change the variables, and it's, it's easily done.
And so, so for each unit that we, that if they go for the full 30 units, that's up to a $90,000 loss from total income that would normally be there. Is that correct for the developers?
Yeah, and keep in mind that the impact fees don't go to the general fund. They go to the funds for the purpose for which they're developed, so they go for your sewer, your water, your signals, whatever it would be. So, you're correct, you, there would be a, a lack of a revenue of that amount of money. There were some questions that came in from the development community about how you'd want to do this. Did you want to have it be 30 for developer, even if they were involved with multiple building locations? Do you want to have it be specific to one subdivision, where they could basically get 30 at each location? I mean, there's things that this didn't take into consideration, that the council could theoretically come up with to kind of augment or, or change this. Previously, and we wrote similar this time, you also have the option to extend it beyond 30 if it was requested, so that was created again in here if you want to take that option as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Bergman?
Thank you. Mr. McBride, from the beginning, when we first instituted this, you heard comments from the builders. You knew what their take was when, when the building started. How many of those, how many of those buildings were spurned by these, you know, discounts, if you will?
We basically have two active builders. We have the Blue Mountain communities, and we have Ramson Piero, and they have both taken advantage of the program. Neither one took advantage of the deferral option. They took advantage of the reduction option. And, you know, when we have met with them and other ones early on to craft the issue, talk about the issue, they actually wanted quite a bit more. And this was kind of a midway compromise from what they thought they would need to help kind of spur development, so it was, it was watered down a little bit. You know, my, my estimation, and you have one here tonight who might want to get up and speak on it, my estimation is it's been very helpful to them. And I think they're looking for your direction on what you want to do as to what their next steps are. They want to know if you want to do this and go forward, or not go forward, so they can decide how they want to run their business and what their intent is.
I guess part of my question also was, do you think this reduction actually, would we have had as, as much building going on had we not started this back when?
I don't think it would. I think you, you'd need to ask the builders that, but I don't think it would. That's just my opinion.
So, we're talking about a $90,000 loss, but what I'm looking at is, look what had happened if we would not have had the building that we did, had we not started this up. And I think it's been very beneficial for both us, the citizens, and bringing new citizens into the city by providing more housing. So, I think it's been very worthwhile, myself.
It's the same situation as the last item, you know, by, does providing the benefit act as a stimulus? Sometimes you don't know until you take action. I think in this case, it did work.
Well, I can only say, and as a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, the Blue Mountain folks are coming through my office again to come to the city. And I asked those folks, were it not for deferred fees, would they be here? And they said no. So, that was the answer I got, direct from the people that we're, we're talking about. And we're only talk, we're, we're talking about deferring this, we're not eliminating it, is, would that be a-
No, it's, it's not a deferral. It is a reduction.
It is a reduction. Okay, well-
None, none of the permits that have been issued under the previous program use the deferral. It was all the reduction.
Okay. But even at that, do we, you know, look at it, you know, there's a, there's a cost-benefit, I, I think, to all of this, and I believe that the benefits are going to outweigh the 90K that we're talking about. And I think it's beneficial to the city in the long run. I don't like to see money not necessarily be there, but in any case, I'll support this. And, you know, I, I think that the city's going to be better off for it here in the long run. Is there any other comments? Mr. Rivero.
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is the other one I brought back up to the council on the two issues, one for the residents and, and like to see strain development and continue that, some of that, if that's the case. And so, I'd like to see us extend for another six months, as we've had in the, in the past, to see if we can stimulate some more develop, development. And the reason I want to have it permanent, because there may be a change in the economy where you don't need to lose this much money in order to bring in more development. So, I like to see it extended for six months, so that's my motion to, to see this go forward. I, I, I'm having a hard time, though. I, I always do, how, how $25 savings that the residents would cost the city and, versus the $90,000 potential, but I'm willing to do anything we can to stimulate home building, building of any kind in the city, so.
Mayor, just so, I'm, I want to make sure that you understand is that we can't extend the old program. It expired. So, what we have to do is prepare a new ordinance and bring it back for your action.
Well, what I was meaning is taking the same thing we had, where it was six-month period, and I'm bringing that back to us.
We can do that. We could, we could craft the ordinance, get the attorney's input on it, schedule the public hearing, and have it brought back to you. And then, obviously, you have a first reading, a second reading, and then it takes 30 days. So, just so you know, you probably won't see this take effect should you vote forward, you know, positively on it. It wouldn't take effect till probably sometime at the end of May.
Mayor Protim Bergman?
Thank you. You know, we have, this program works, we've seen it works, we have the proof. Rather than six months, three months in it, we'll have to look at again at extending it. Why don't we go for a year? Make it worthwhile, you know? Why have Scott have to go through the whole process again in three months if it's working, and we want to extend it another six months? Why don't we just do it a year? Make it a, a time that's actually, you know, worthwhile.
I'll, I'm in my motion for a year.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, let's call for the question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule and Administrative Budget.
This is a, an item that we bring to you twice a year. The request tonight is actually for funding commitment that would take effect for your next fiscal year. Funding wouldn't actually be available until July 1 of 2015. It seems like we're way ahead of the game, and we are, but we're not playing on your schedule. We're playing on the schedule of the state of California. And the state says, to get your money for your obligations, you have to have it into us by early March. And so, therefore, it's here tonight for your consideration. But also, just, I know that some of you have been involved with this before, recognize that you're actually the agency that reviews this, and you have to take action on it, but then one of your actions is to transmit it to the oversight board. So, technically, you don't have the final say-so in this. It has to go to another agency, which is going to meet next Tuesday at 1:30. There are the representatives that have to look at the, basically, they have to look at what your actions are to decide if it's going to go forward to the state. So, there's different layers in this. I know it's new for some of you. This request tonight is for the funds that are needed. Some of the funds are funds that we have on hand. There are leases that your former agency has. There are some property sale proceeds that your former agency has. There are some other fees that it collects monthly. Part of the proceeds that were being requested are property tax funds. Part of them are also to use your existing bond funds, and those are primarily to cover two capital projects, technically, three capital projects. They're for the Wittenway Outwater Boulevard signal modification, the UP Railroad Signal Interconnect project, and for Broadway Pedestrian Safety and Lighting Project. This is the first time that we've requested the use of any of our former bond proceeds, because up until this period, you didn't have all the things lined up that we needed to do to make the formal request. We've done all those, we've solved all those problems, we've gone through that maze, and now we're eligible to request for funding. It's obviously a detailed document, but essentially what it comes down to is just requesting the funds that your former agency had. This is not putting a new tax or new burden on anybody that's out there. Those are funds that you would have received had you had a redevelopment agency, just that now you have to go through this process twice a year. And there is, there is some additional funds that are left over that would have come to the agency that are now dissolved and reused by all the taxing entities. So, this year, you might want to take a look when you're working on the budget. There are some items that we get, they're pass-throughs and residuals. Those are things we didn't necessarily get before, we get now, and the other taxing entities get them as well. And that's just the way the law was written, that those become available for you. On the administrative budget, that's the other piece to this, I'd note that we're requesting $250,000 for the year. That is the minimum that's allowed by law. You can request more, but we've tried to work with the minimum. And you have a direct benefit coming back to more or less offset general fund or other expenses of about $178,000 for staff time and, and those related expenses. You also have some things in your admin budget set up for professional services, accounting or the audit, and so we try to make sure that there's as little impact on the operations of the successor agencies can be, because you're basically having it taken care of with other funds. So, it's intended not to be a drawdown on the, on the city's general fund. I would also point out that this is the first year that we intend to repay a loan that was provided by the city to the former redevelopment agency, and so we're going to take care of that this year. I believe it's about $280,000, and that's for funds that were not present when it was dissolved, and so that establishes that, and that's basically a credit you're going to see for next year. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on these, this item. It is two resolutions, one for the ROPS document, which is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, and one for the administrative budget.
Questions or comments for Mr. McBride? Now, do we need two motions, or just one single motion? Oh, Mr. Vineyard has a question.
Yeah, I'll just make a motion to adopt Resolution Number SA 2015-3 and Resolution Number SA 2015-4.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Awarding a contract for construction of Wittenway Outwater Boulevard traffic signal and roadway modifications.
So, Mayor and council tonight is the culmination of a lot of work that's been done by your staff over many, many years to get this to where it is tonight. As you know, we recently had your authority for the bid call, and then we were able to get that process done, have the advertising taken care of, we received the bids back, and today we're able to report back who the lowest responsive bidder was for the project. The reason why the last item was, was placed where it was is if you wanted to withhold or take out funding for the capital projects, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to then award them, so- projects, you wouldn't be able to then award them. So it was placed on the agenda in a matter where you had to provide authority for the ROPS, which would provide funding for it. And now the funding that you're going to request from the state would be eligible to cover the expense for this item. So again, this is not a general fund issue. This is a project that will be completed with your former agency bond proceeds. It is helpful to have a local bidder be the least or the lowest responsive bidder. It's local families that benefit from your project directly. You know, they're competent. They'll do the work. They have successfully also received other bids in the city recently. And we have been, another item that's coming up next we'll talk about. Just to kind of remind you again, you've got a little bit over $2.3 million in bond proceeds available to be used. So obviously, this project being the bid is 1.1 million. It's going to use up a considerable part of that, but there are funds available to use that. And then also keep in mind that your approval for this tonight still also has to have approval by the oversight board as well as the state. And there won't be any construction that's going to occur until after July 1. That's the period when the money would be available. We have set a pretty tight window to get construction done. I think we talked about a 60-day construction period for the project. So we're going to try and do it as quickly as possible. Obviously, the project's going to make an impact on the intersection, but no matter when you do it or how quickly you do it, it's going to be an impact. We'd like to try to get it done as quickly as we can. And it'll be good to be done in summer, so it's ahead of any bad weather or the holidays. I'd be happy to answer questions that you or the council has.
Any questions for Mr. McBride? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Second. There's a first and a second. Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Verbal update regarding UPRR Signal Interconnect Agreement.
Mayor, counsel, the purpose of this item tonight was to show you that we do have a contract in place with U.P. Railroad. It is for a signal interconnect. That goes hand in hand with the project that you've just awarded. This has to be done concurrently with it. The issue we've run into with the railroad is every six months, they have to redesign the project. And so although we did this last February, it's not even really a year old, or maybe a year and a few days old, they're letting us know that we have to redesign your project. There's an expense for that. And most likely, your project's going to go up in some cost. We've already done this twice before. Every time we'd have funding lined up to do it, it would fall through. We had to redo this every time. So I'm optimistic this time, now that you've committed for the project that we just approved, this is going to line up and we're going to get it done. The previous cost, as it's in the contract, was for about $279,000. It'd give us an idea that we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 310 to 325. We have requested enough money on the ROPS document for the signal and for this work. There's no other appropriation that's going to be necessary. It's going to be included in what we're requesting from the state. We just wanted to let you know that it goes hand in hand and is part of what we're budgeting for our purposes to get the work done. And there will be an updated agreement we'll have to execute, but we wanted to let you know the process and where we are with it.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. McBride? Then I will ask for a motion.
No, motion required. Next item.
Oh, okay. Next item then.
Awarding a contract for construction of Broadway Avenue revitalization and pedestrian safety improvements.
This is the final one tonight that are related. As we just discussed on the last item, we're talking about using your available bond proceeds. This is the last piece to that. Unfortunately, you can see the bids that they came in. We've attached the sheet for you for the bid summary.
Which number?
We don't have enough money to do the entire project, which we knew going into it. So we had a lot of deductive alternatives that were available to be used by the contractor to kind of gauge things that might come off to try to fit our actual budget. And clearly, with $2.3 million, when you know one project's $1.2 plus another $300,000 on top of it, you're not going to have enough to do what this one was. So that was the reason for the purpose of the deductive alternatives. So again, the way the contract specs were written, the least responsive bidder is also, lowest responsive bidder is also Rolfe Construction. We've talked to them about the next steps. And if we get your consent tonight, we'll be working with them to implement the deductive alternatives, come up with change orders to get it to fit your budget. The budget's going to be right about $800,000. That's what you have left. And again, the money would not be an impact on your general fund. It's going to be your bond proceeds that are going to come forward. Work couldn't start until it's approved by the oversight board and the state. It won't happen until after July 1. But this would extinguish your bond funds. This would use it up between these three items we talked about tonight. You wouldn't have any other bond funds remaining. Again, it's a great thing you have a local contractor that's going to do the work. They're going to be here. They're going to take pride in what they do. You're going to have the benefit of the families getting your funds. And so there's a revolving part to it, a multiplier effect to it. It's helpful. Some of the substitutions that we're going to make, just so you have an idea, we're going to have to use regular concrete instead of stamped pavers for some of the walkways that we talked about. We're going to have to reduce some of the areas to get it under budget. But there were about 12 or 14 different alternatives. We're going to use all of those to get the project down to where it is. But in the end, you will have something with more lighting, no drainage issues, and safer for pedestrian access.
Comments from the council? Any questions for Mr. McBride? Well, I can only say that I have been down after the rain has fallen and seen what it's like there across from Passadore's and Olens and that. And we can't move fast enough to get that water moving there. But one of the things that I also noted, and Councilmember Raymond was with me also, was the condition of the sidewalk from the root of all the trees there that are absolutely destroying those sidewalks. And I know it can't come from these funds, but that's going to have to be addressed soon. So I hope that there's some type of grant funding or some other method of financing, doing something with those sidewalks out there. Because just putting patchwork, you know, a little piece of asphalt or something there is not going to relieve us in court when somebody catches their cane or their walker or something on something like that. That was in pretty deplorable condition. So, and I'm sure you're aware of all of that right there. But insofar as all the other items that need to be addressed in this project, I'm hopeful that we can get them all done satisfactorily, you know, with the funding that we'll have available to us. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to award the contract. Second.
There's a first and a second. Any other further discussion or questions? Call for the question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Authorizing a contract with RSG for successor agency consulting services for fiscal year 2015-16.
Again, Mayor and Council, this is obviously something that's far out in advance. This is for next fiscal year. We do unfortunately have to tell the state what we intend to use the funds for this early in the process so we can make sure we get them. RSG Incorporated basically has been very helpful to your city. They have basically helped us provide for financial calculations to make sure we're doing what's needed pursuant to the State Department of Finance, the State Controller's Office. They're the ones who help craft the budget so that we can carve out as much as possible under our admin funds so that it doesn't impact the general fund. And like I said earlier, your admin budget this year of about $178,000 is going to offset staff time and expense, which ordinarily would be transferred to some other fund, most likely the general fund. And also, this is the first year we're going to, and the only year, because we're going to repay the loan at one time. And that was all by way of them looking forward at budgeting to figure out when we could do this and to make it actually occur with, for us. I have been to the state twice with representatives from RSG to argue about our requests for the ROPS. They're extremely good at what they do, and we need their services going forward. And so the funds requested for this are on your ROPS document. This is basically also coincides with the fact that you have to have an agreement in place. This agreement also goes to the oversight board, and then later on, it goes to the Department of Finance. So this is kind of keeping that theme that everything has a multi-part process to it. But basically, they're essential for what we do. I mean, Bill Zanoni and Laquinda are important for financial, you know, the finance well-being of the city. They're integral to what we do for the successor agency. We just have to have them to help us keep going.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. McBride? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Protam and Mr. Vineyard, call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Council Matters. Ratifying Appointments by the Mayor to the Oversight Board for the Former Atwater Redevelopment Agency.
Okay, so the appointments here are what we're going to do. One member appointed by the mayor for the city that formed the redevelopment agency. So I will nominate myself for that position. One member appointed by the largest special district by property tax share with territory in the territorial jurisdiction of the former redevelopment agency, which is the type of special district that is eligible to receive the property tax revenues pursuant to Section 34188. And my request is for Atwater citizen Robin Shepherd to take that position. And lastly, one member representing the employees of the former redevelopment agency appointed by the mayor. And I am requesting to appoint Laquinda Doyle, our finance operations manager for that position.
So, move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Council Comments and Requests for Future Agenda Items.
We'll start with Mr. Vineyard and just work our way around.
Sure. Not the next city council meeting, but the one in April. I'd like to get a update on the solar savings at the water treatment plant, if I could, and where we're at with that as far as PG&E versus solar. I know we're doing the $70,000 whatever a year, but I'd like to see what we're, how we're at and how we're doing on the solar savings. Also, if we can get an update on the other solar project. I know we had, didn't we have the parking lots tested or something?
We have a little bit of an issue. Their contractor just quit. So Mark and Scott and I will be meeting with the new contractor and with the solar company to try to work out some issues we have. So.
If we could have that for April, because I won't be here next meeting due to surgery. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it also appropriate for comments at this time?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to, being my birthday today, coming down here to the city council meeting, spending it here instead of with family, but I.
And I didn't get you anything, Joe.
I know, how about that? And I just want to say thank you to both my parents. They were, they were both wonderful individuals. And I want to thank them for everything they've done for me. I also want to thank my loving wife for everything she puts up with and not being there at times like tonight. I also, I'm appreciative of my children. I love you all. And you're just the life of my life. And I want to say that this birthday, that I appreciate you all. You're the best gift I could have.
And a happy birthday to you there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Raymond.
Happy birthday, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
On the next, next meeting, I want to see possibly, since we're looking at economic development, economic growth, looking at crediting new businesses that rent vacant buildings, credit them some kind of tax rebate at the end of the year, be it half of what it would have been, or whatever we come up with, to try to entice businesses to come.
Okay, that it? Very good. Mayor Protempoary?
Thank you. Thank you for not making me follow Mr. Rivera. That was, that was good. I like, I got two agenda requests for the next meeting. If we can have the Laserfish issue the paperless agenda as an action item to take action on it so we can get this moving forward. And then also, so we can cure some issues that we've had, I'd like to see an item where we discuss and come up with a decision on how we handle commission appointments as it pertains to council members that are not here for the entire process, selection process. So, you know, so we don't have any, any issues in the future. So we can have something clear cut and on paper.
Can I ask for clarification as to whether you want this to just be a discussion item or do you want us to come forward with a proposal?
I would like to see this with a proposal. I'd like to see it as an action item so we can, so we can discuss it and we can take action and have something in writing so we don't have any issues in the further, you know, in the future.
Well, to make it more palatable, maybe, could it be discussion with possible action?
Could we, may I ask that we have that in April, so that I may be part of that discussion?
I'm fine with that.
And then in terms of the policy, do you have any parameters that you want in there? Or do you want us to just come up with what we think is a good recommendation?
You have much more knowledge in this. This is what you deal with. So I would like to have you come up with what you think would be the most palatable, the most, the easiest.
And then you can provide your input. And if you don't.
Yeah, and then by the time Mr. Vineyard comes back, we can, you know, have something finalized.
Okay. Oh, so do you want it for next meeting then, or do you want it for when he comes back, right?
No, I'm sorry.
In April.
In April.
Right, yeah.
Perfect, great.
And then, then one last thing. This Saturday is Valentine's Day. I just would like everybody to remember their special loved ones on that day and let them know how much they mean to you.
Oh, yeah. Well, I just want to take a moment, as many out there, and maybe those that are still awake at home on the couch might know. But I wanted to thank all those folks that have given their prayers and their kind words and wishes and what have you with respect to my younger daughter, Mary, who just had her second back surgery in as many weeks and has gone through a whole lot. She has terrible veins and sent me a text message with a picture of her arms where, I kid you not, two days ago, they stuck her 21 times to try and find a vein to keep her IVs going. She's been that way forever. And so anyway, she's home. She just got discharged. And again, thank you for your thoughts and your prayers. Hopefully, this second surgery is the one. So, yeah, that's, that's it. And I also want to echo the comments of Mr. Bergman as far as Valentine's is concerned. People kind of play that off, but you know something? That is a good time of the year to, you know, really show the wife or the husband that you have, or the children that you have, or other relatives, or even just good friends, you know, that, you know, you really do truly care about them. And that, you know, if we had a little bit more of Valentine-type spirit, maybe this world would be a little better place. But in any case, it's been a long night. Thank you so much, everyone that hung in here with us tonight. And for those at home that are still watching, thank you so much for your tolerance. And we will see you here in another month.